You ready? Mic is on. Open session, roll call please.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Bridge.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor James Mosby.
Present. Mr. City Attorney, any action from closed session? It's red, but it can't quite, there you go.
City Council met to discuss the four items on the closed session agenda. Council gave direction to staff on item number one and item number four. Item number two and three were not held, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Okay, invocation, Nate Marsh. Very good, please rise.
Let's pray. God, thank you for this evening, thank you for the rain. We definitely need it, and we are dependent on your mercies. Thank you for the authorities that you establish, direct this council tonight, grow them in wisdom and insight, help them address the difficult problems of our community with courage and boldness. We recognize there are divisions and hostility among our people. Show the council the way of justice and fairness to all. We confess that we can be deceived and manipulated at times, that's why we need your strength and understanding, because you see all, you know all things, you created all things. Lead us. God protect and watch over those who watch over us. We think of our firefighters, police, medical professionals, government workers. Give them peace as they address sometimes impossible problems. God protect us from evil, keep us from temptation, and care for our families. You are good. Grow our compassion towards each other, and harden our commitment to truth and righteousness. Grow our joy in seeing each other succeed, and help us see you in all of your work. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hear you very much today.
I always want to break in, sing in America.
You can, did you want to rendition? No? City manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Somebody's turned my mic on. Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to recognize the urban search and rescue Task Force 12, which comprises of thirty firefighters from the Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties for successfully completing an eighteen day deployment in the Eaton Fire and the Palisade Fire in Malibu. They searched through thirty-five hundred fire damaged structures and vehicles and assisted for search for missing persons, and I really wanted to thank them, that's a big effort they did. We have free kitchen pails for organic waste. They're one gallon pails, you can use them, put them on your countertops, underneath your sink, refrigerator, freezer, just something to help you get those waste into the organic recycles. They are free at the library if you want to pick one up, or you can call 875-800-24. We have a special budget meeting coming up, I want to invite everybody to come on out. It'll be Tuesday 11th between 5:00 and 7:00. And this will be focusing on the priorities for the upcoming years for the budget cycle, and I encourage you to come on out, and that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
I have a question for you, I understand you have some translation headsets coming? Do you know if that's coming?
I think it was one of the options that we had with the package that we bought. It's something I can look in, if you like, I can report that back on the next city manager report and find out.
All right.
But it was an option that we had available, so I, we can look into it.
Some little bird told me we might be getting some of those, but, yeah, thank you. All right. Now's the time for public comment on consent calendar. Three minutes for consent calendar, let me read it to you. We have revisions to the appointment method of commissions. Nobody got excited about that? Let's try another one. Award of Professional Service Agreement for consultant services for the development of the City of Lompoc Permit Ready ADU Plan. Everybody's been waiting for the ADU plan. Nobody. Okay, well, these items, if we get a motion to approve, they'll be approved in...
I'll make a motion.
Got a first with Councilmember Ball. We got a second by Starbuck. Okay, I just, before we finalize this, if we could just, real fast, if the committee development director could just explain real fast, or maybe Greg Stones wanted to explain real fast what number two is? I think some people have been waiting for this, and maybe they waited so long they didn't realize it was coming. Quick synopsis?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. The Permit Ready ADU Program, we were awarded grant funding, so 100% grant funded program. This is just the initiation of the contract with RRM in order to begin the community outreach component. So you'll be seeing more of us, and we'll be meeting with the public, our builder community, our design architectural community, to make sure that we get product, and that product should be a set of plans that you can come into the counter and say, I want to build that, and take it home, and I like to use the analogy of some instructions like IKEA furniture building, take it home and build your ADU. So it's really going to streamline the process, make it quick, and people are going to be able to have seniors in their families age in place, their adult children that perhaps they don't want to leave and can't afford rents around here, they can have in those units, or they can rent them out. So a lot of options, and we're excited that we were able to secure that grant funding to offer this program.
Very good, thank you. We already had the motions. Do I do it again?
I have a, I have a question now.
You have a question? You can deliberate.
Okay. I wasn't going to ask, but since we're discussing, a couple of years ago, Encinitas was a city that had pre-approved plans for ADUs up to certain square footages, and they were pre-engineered everything. You bought the plan from the city and you were already approved a bill, basically. I was told that we couldn't do that here, and we weren't, and here it is roughly two years later, and now it's on consent. What has changed?
Money. We have money now. There was a program, a grant fund that came out that allowed us the ability to do it. So it's an expensive product to create, and...
It was already created. It was done. They were, they already had the plans, they were doing it down south. I just was curious, I was telling, no, no, it would, it's not going to work here, it's not in accordance with this, and...
Yeah.
There was every reason on earth that we couldn't have pre-approved plans for ADUs, and now, poof, guess what, we're going to spend two-hundred-and-some-thousand on them, so I'm happy, but...
Yeah, they, they have to be designed specifically to your community and our site inventory, that is something that will be done. They're going to look at all of the sites in Lompoc, and which sites could actually accommodate an ADU, what types of ADUs, and then come up with a product that will fit the majority of the sites in Lompoc, and there will be more than one product. And so there is a lot that goes into it that is very specific to our soils, our environment, and just factors that you can't take another community's designs and slap them into your city. So again, super excited, can't wait to start rolling out and engaging with the community.
Thank you, I know we went a little further, but that's pretty exciting, right? Super exciting, all right, so we already had Councilmember Ball on the first, Councilmember Starbuck on a second. Correct? All right, go ahead and vote. Consent, calendar passed, five zero. Staff presentations, I know everybody's waiting for this one. Management Service Director, Kristi Donnelly. The annual comprehensive financial report, everybody's waiting for this. We already got calls. Only a few questions. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public and city staff, I'm Kristi Donnelly, the Management Services Director. I'm here today to present to you our fiscal year 2324 audit report and ACFA review, ACFA standing for the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. I'm going to start by going over what we're going to do. First, we're going to present our audit results. I have Mr. Ryan Domino, our principal and partner with LSL, here to talk about the audit and our results. Our, we're going to talk a little bit about the enterprise fund status at year end, at fiscal year end as of June 30, 2024. And just a reminder that our fiscal year runs from July 1st, and so we're looking at July 1st, 2023, through the end of June 30, 2024. We're going to look at our governmental fund status at year end. I'm going to talk a little bit about general fund reserve, and look at a couple of the outliers within the reports that may need a little bit further discussion, and then we'll open it up for questions. I'm sure that I'm going to address all of your questions even before we get to them, so I'm, I'm kidding, of course, happy to have a vibrant discussion tonight. I'm going to start by introducing Ryan Domino, he's CPA and partner at LSL, and he was the principal on our financial audit. Come on, Ryan.
Look at that.
Well, good evening, it is a pleasure to be here tonight to present the results of our 2024 annual financial audit, so thank you for having me. Like Director Donnelly mentioned, my name is Ryan Domino, I'm partner with LSL CPAs. Been the city's auditors now for about four years, and so this is, you know, year four of the audit, and have a few results to go over. So first thing I want to do is talk about the scope of the engagement. We have been engaged by the city to perform a annual financial audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. Generally accepted auditing is basically the bare minimum audit standard that every organization that gets an audit, it has to meet this minimum standard, whereas government auditing standards is a higher level of audit required of governmental agencies. So we have to not only test the numbers and the balances, but we have to also audit internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, bond covenants, grant agreements, those types of things. So it's a little bit of a step up from a standard financial audit that other organizations get. Some other things I always like to do in these presentations is just kind of go over the myths and legends that surround what a financial audit is. So what a financial audit is, is I'm examining account balances and transactions that are recorded in the annual comprehensive financial report, and the whole goal of that audit is to provide the users of the financial statements, so this council, bondholders, grantor agencies assurance or confidence that the numbers that are presented in here are accurate and can be relied upon for decision-making purposes. What I don't do is, I'm not a forensic auditor, so that I'm not hunting under every rock for fraud or embezzlement or those types of things that you hear about. I'm supposed to be aware of it, I'm supposed to have some tests for it, but it's not the primary goal. So if I were to come across anything, I would obviously report it, but I'm not a forensic auditor, I'm not looking for fraud primarily. The other thing I'm not is I'm not a performance auditor. So although if I look at the numbers, I don't, my audit report does not say city's improving or getting worse, it just simply says the numbers are accurate. The only time I would ever comment on financial health is if we believe that there is a significant risk of financial hardship or failure in the next 12 months. So barring that, we don't generally talk about the, the health of any organizations we audit. The other thing we are, is we are independent. So as the external auditor, I do not work for management, my reports are addressed to the city council. The reason for that is, if I work for management, then they can tell me what to do and how to do my job, which we don't want. You want to have a unbiased review of your financial statements from someone who doesn't have a vested interest in the organization. So to that point, none of, neither myself nor any of the auditors that worked on this engagement have personal or financial interests in the city of Lompoc, so they have an unbiased and objective work when they go about it. And we do have a responsibility as the external auditors to the stakeholders, so this council, bondholders, grantors, anyone who uses the financial statements, they are relying upon us to provide objective, unbiased feedback to the organizations we audit. So very briefly, we, we break our audit into two phases. We have our interim phase of fieldwork, which is, which happened in April of last year, and during this time, we essentially examine internal controls, the policies, procedures, and processes that go into generating the numbers, and essentially the checks and balances to make sure that everything gets recorded properly. We also would provide feedback to management at this time and conduct a risk assessment. So governmental organizations have thousands upon thousands of transactions in any given year, we can't possibly audit all of them. So what we have to develop is where is the risk at, and we develop procedures to respond to those transactions or account balances that we deem to be a higher risk. So once we've done all that, we conducted our final fieldwork, this is what everyone considers to be the audit itself, when we dive into the account balances and transactions themselves, do the compliance testing with the various laws and regulations and other items that we have to test for. And all the procedures that we do, the goal is to have sufficient appropriate audit evidence that the numbers that are being presented in this document are accurate. So we did all that work, it's, it's a tremendous uplift, it's approximately four or 500 staff hours on my side, so it's, it's a big undertaking, and the whole result of that undertaking is our opinion letter, which is included in the annual comprehensive financial report as the first item in the financial section. We did render an unmodified opinion for the fiscal year 2024. That is the best and highest opinion the profession allows us to render. It essentially means that the financial statements are accurate and reliable as of June 30, 2024. Additionally, we issued our report on internal control and compliance. This report is the one that's recovered, required by government auditing standards, and this report would outline any sort of control deficiencies, so anything in the internal control process or structure that needed improvement, and as well as any non-compliance with laws, regulations type things. For this year, under the audit, we did have one, one finding. We called it a significant deficiency in control and non-compliance, and I'll get into the details of that in a second, but we did not have any what's higher issues. So material weakness is a much more severe issue than a significant deficiency, and we had no material weaknesses this year. Clicker, clicker doesn't want to work. Oh, there we go. Okay, so the details of that finding essentially is, as we were conducting the audit of the successor agency private purpose trust fund, we did note that administrative costs that were charged to that fund did exceed the Department of Finance, California Department of Finance's allowable amount by about $39,000. When we investigated the cause of the overage and in allocation there, it, it was determined to be a misunderstanding on the part of staff reading the, the letters that the California Department of Finance gives them to tell them what the allowable amount is. So the finding has been discussed, and a corrective action plan has been put together and recommended to, to staff, so we do not expect this finding to repeat in future years, but for 2024, it was, it was an item, the only item of note. Some other things I have to discuss in, in these presentations is, is going concern, so that is essentially, do we believe that the city is financially healthy enough to continue for the next 12 months? Yes, we do, we don't have any going concern doubt, so that is a positive thing. We did not identify any sort of fraud, waste, or abuse as part of our audit through either our testing, and nothing was brought to our attention by either staff or employees of the city. We had no disagreements with management about the application of accounting principles, there were no new changes in accounting principle this year, so that's always a positive. And we had no difficulties conducting our audit. At this one point, I do want to express appreciation to Director Donnelly and her staff. I mentioned it takes us four or 500 hours to conduct these audits, and so I can only imagine the lift of staff's side as well, so I do appreciate all the hard work getting us the items we need to get this, this, get this completed. Additionally, we review all the estimates that go into the financial statements, so the two major ones are the pension and other post-employment benefit liability, and we look at the underlying data that goes into those estimates to make sure they are accurate. So the, I'll wrap up my presentation with just a few financial highlights, Director Donnelly will go into more detail later, but there are just a few things that I always like to go over in these presentations, particularly in the general fund. So in the general fund, we had a net income of the year of approximately $400,000. The unassigned fund balance, which you'll see on the balance sheet, that essentially represents your reserves, and the, the best practice of the industry is typically about 16%, that's the benchmark. City of Lompoc's unassigned balance represent, is about 14% of current year expenditures, so it is a little bit less than the industry benchmark. So one of the things that we had discussed is, is making strides to increase that reserve balance a little bit. The overall expenditures were $6.3 million under budget, so there were some categories that had overages or underages, but as a whole, the general fund expenditures came in under budget, and revenues came in approximately 1.3 million over the prior year. And then finally, just a few other items, transactions that, you know, everyone generally is interested in, so the city's capital assets and capital projects increased about 4% or $10 million from the prior year, mainly just due to ongoing activities. Long-term debt increased about $4.3 million, this was primarily due to some new loan obligations which were entered into during the year, offset by just routine repayments on existing debt. The pension liability did increase $5.1 million, which is very consistent with what happened across all agencies participating in CalPERS across California. The reason is CalPERS anticipated getting a 6.9% return on their investments, but only got 5.8%, and anytime they miss their target, everyone's liability goes up. And then finally, the other post-employment benefits liability did increase $2.9 million. The city's actuary ended up changing a few of his assumptions and estimates that went into calculating that liability, and it increased $2.9 million as a result. The liability is about 89% funded though, still, which is significantly higher than the industry average. Most cities and governments I work with are either completely unfunded or at a very low level of funding, so even at 89%, that is higher than, than most organizations. So that is my presentation on the audit, I'm more than happy to answer questions on that process. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Kristi to take over.
Any questions? Councilmember Bridge.
Yes, sir. In your briefing, you said, and I may not have understood it completely correctly, but in your April audit, you did a risk assessment?
Mm-hmm.
And you didn't mention what was identified, but in a more general, when you came back in December, were all your risk assessment issues addressed?
Yes, they were, so I, I could share with you the risks if you like.
No, you answered the question.
Okay, yes, we addressed them.
Any bills?
Just a quick question, this is kind of general, and again, just because you did mention it, one of your bullet points in one of the slides says, "We identified no fraud, waste, or abuse during..." I get that. But you also said that you guys don't really dig in to...
Right.
Decide what is waste or not, so talk to me about, why do you put that you didn't identify waste, and how do you guys look at the idea of waste?
Right, so my, my job is not necessarily to, I'm not looking at it from a perspective of like, okay, I got to go find fraud. However, there are certain standards that I have to follow, and there are certain requirements that I have to do to respond to fraud risks, as well as, as I'm evaluating transactions for waste and abuse, if I were to come across any sort of transactions, it's like, hey, why are we spending, you know, they talk about the golden toilet, or something like that we've all heard about, if I come across purchases like that, that would be a reportable item of like, perhaps waste. Abuse would be, you know, for example, someone is using the, the city purchasing card to fill up their personal car tank, so if we were to come across any of that stuff as part of our testing, we would report on it, but it's not the primary focus of what I'm doing, so...
Fair enough, so to clarify, it's not necessarily a philosophical debate about whether something is waste, or someone thinks it's valuable, this is just if something egregious happens, right?
Yeah, if something looks, looks, waste and abuse are a little bit of a gray area, but if something looks amiss, we would report on it.
Perfect, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm going to take over from here, and we're going to go over the ACFA. And I want to first just call, this is, this is our ACFA, and I just think it looks, I am really proud of this cover. One of our staff members took this picture, and I'm just, just excited about it, so I'm pointing that out. The ACFA is available online on our website, it is also available with the agenda packet, and so if you want to look online as we go through it, you can do that, I believe that there is a copy in the lobby, although somebody may have already borrowed that, that's okay. And we're going to go ahead and start. Starting first with business-type activities, utilities. This is our first graph of many. I'm going to point to page, I believe it is 63. This is where I get most of the numbers on this. I've got a, a little, I've got my own. I always borrow Dean's, but I got, I got one for, that I could use, so... We can look at, water came in with a little bit of a, of a net decrease, as you can see here. The blue is representing our expenses, the green is our revenue, it's showing that the expenses are a little bit higher than the revenue, that is the first year that that is happening. What, what this is an indication of is that it's time for us to do a rate study. Let's see where we are. The next one, in electric, there, the revenues are outpacing expenses, and that is related to the emergency rate increase, and then the permanent rate increase that we did. We do want to see more of that in order to be able to make up the reserve that we had to use during 2023, two, they all blend together. Waste water here is coming in right about even, and we got a .4 million dollar net increase. And, and then solid waste, we are still seeing a negative in our revenues, our expenses are higher than our revenues by about $2 million. It is not as pronounced as it was last year, and I do anticipate that it's going to continue to, to catch up as the rate increases that we put into place a year ago begin to match what it was that the report had recommended. So this is kind of a, a summary there of our revenues and expenses, and then if we look here, this is our late utility billing accounts receivable. Now, this is different than the accounts receivable numbers that you're going, that you find on page 59. The numbers here are specifically for customers that are considered late, so more than 30 days late on their bills. It is also not including, it's not including current, it's not including accruals, and, and it's not including general billing. So the numbers that are on the, the accounts receivable on page 59 are higher than what you see here, but what I'm happy to report here is that this, these numbers, this .36 million, 1.1 million, .6, and .35 are down significantly from last year. Last year, our late, our late utility billing AR was at, here was .9... Here was .91. This was 1.9. This one was 1.6, and this one was .91. So you can see the trend is that people are making payments on their bills. They are coming in and making payments on their payment plans. And I just want to thank our customers for just... I know it's hard, and I am just grateful that they are working with us to get on payment plans and then to make those payments on those payment plans. I'm also very grateful to our staff, the utility billing and treasury staff. They work so hard to get payments from our customers, to do it with a smile, to really be helpful. I hear story after story of how helpful they are, and I just want to give them a shout out today because they really work hard under sometimes some really challenging conditions. So tried to push the light to move the slide forward. That isn't good. Okay, so that was our utilities. We're gonna move on to governmental activities now. We have a lot to cover tonight, so we're gonna just kind of touch on each thing, and then we can go into more depth with questions if you want. This is a review slide. I've used this slide before. It talks about what governmental activities are. So the thing to notice here is that the general fund is a governmental activity. But governmental activities are made up of more than just the general fund. There are also special revenue funds, capital projects, and debt service funds. So sometimes it is, even for me, I have to double-check the title of what I'm looking at because it could say governmental on one page and general on another page. And you may... Why are these not the same number? Well, it's because, one, includes special revenues and capital projects and debt service, whereas general fund is just a general fund. So that gives you a quick summary of that. I am gonna have problems with these two things. Okay, moving on. Our governmental activities revenues by source. So you can see here, these are the different governmental activities. And the breakdown, from about here to about the 5% are taxes. And that's 57% of our revenues in governmental activities is due to taxes. Our general fund balance is $12.9 million. That is all of the general fund balance, restricted, assigned, and unassigned. 2023 restated was $12.5 million. I want to take a second and just address... This is the first time that word "restated" is coming up, and I just want to let everybody know what that is. If you look at page... I think the easiest version to see this on is on page 122. And at the bottom, you can see that of the actual amounts, there is a restatement of $436,638. And that has to do with the accounting division discovering a timing issue with revenues. That revenues were booked in 2023 as revenues that were actually a deposit, so they need to be recognized as revenues over future years. So we have had backed those out of the revenues for 2023, and we will be recognizing those revenues as they are earned. That was something that we had discovered due to some conversations that we had, which is, you know, again, testament to being able to work together with the different divisions and the departments. It is just a fantastic group to work with. Unassigned general fund balance, $7.2 million. This is our reserve. And our general fund reserve target, as Ryan had mentioned, 16.7% is our policy, which is the two months of operating expenses, and that is $8.5 million. And this is a fun graph that shows... Kind of looking at the green, you see, the purple has stayed pretty consistent, a little bit of raised. This is our restricted. But the unassigned... We have... We got down in 2020 to a negative unassigned fund balance. And we have been able to recover from that, and we've moved. However, it isn't still at policy. And I'm gonna talk about that here in a second, about why would we have a net income, so to speak? We have revenues over our expenses, but yet our fund balance, our unassigned fund balance, is lower than our policy level this year. So why is that? And I'm gonna get to that in just a minute. So right now, this is the graph where the accountants geek out, and everybody else takes a little nap. We've got the 38269. That is our excess of revenues over expenditures. This top number includes the one-time transfers that we did to the CIP program and the donation to the Mural Society. Down here is those same numbers, but without the one-time transfer. This is basically our operating without the one-time activity. And so we get down to our general fund reserves, and I'm gonna go over this with an easier graph over here. So this starts with... We ended last year at $8.3 million. We added in the 38269. That's that .4. We have to decrease by the restatement, the 436,638. That's here. And then the three things, really two things, sorry, that are contributing to the fact that we are below reserve right now. One is that we have more monies that are restricted and assigned than we did last year, $1.1 million more restricted and assigned. That's pretty typical for an in-between budget year. We have departments who have big projects that didn't finish their big projects in the first year that are carrying those over to the second year. And so that increased from last year. In addition, the target that we have is higher than what it was last year. So when our expenses increase, 16.7% of our expenses is going to be higher. So this year, our goal would be 8.5, whereas last year it was 8.1. What this means is that we are, right now, 1.3 million below our reserve policy. So that's going to inform our decisions as we move forward into budget cycle. We need to be able to make that up. My recommendation is that we would make that up within four to five years, and by doing methodical, set aside $250,000 a year. So there are other options, and it is possible over... If we... We absolutely will be running a balanced budget. That is my commitment. If we... We can use this to inform our decisions as we move forward. That's the... So I have some final thoughts, and then we're gonna get into a couple of line items in the ACFER. I came across these two quotes, and they're inspired to me because within the accounting profession, within governmental accounting, those of us who work on these ACFERS have kind of this understanding that this book that we publish is perfect for about a minute, and then we reread it after it's printed. And so in reviewing the incidents of my... This is George Washington in his farewell address. "In reviewing the incidents of my administration, I am unconscious of intentional error. I am nevertheless too sensible of my deficits not to think it probable that I may have committed many errors. And better a diamond with a flaw than a pebble without." And I would submit to you that this here, this really is a diamond. We have worked really hard to put together a good product. It is not a flawless diamond in that there are some errors that were, even after publication, that I found. And we're gonna look at a couple of those. But it is, as our auditor has stated, it is representative of accurate numbers. It is, in all substance... I don't know. I'm getting corny in saying it's a jewel. It's a diamond. We... I'm proud of it. There are things that are not perfect, and I am a perfectionist. So I am gonna show you here a couple of those immaterial errors that we found post-publication because I want to point them out. First thing, on page 30, there is a sentence in our MDNA that should read, "Of the reported negative $1.1 million of citywide unrestricted net position, $108.4 million is attributed to pension obligations." The sentence that is in there indicates that it's a positive change, where it really wasn't a positive change. It was just that $108.4 million is attributed to pension obligations. So that was one. Page 36, and yes, I do go there because it bothers me. On page 36 at the bottom, there is a period that is highlighted in yellow. And for all of the little yellow things that I got out of this book, I missed that one. And so I'm pointing it out. On page 37, the last section of bullets, the middle line, says, "The finance and city treasury increased 782.6% or 15.2% due to filled vacancies. It should have added statement and credit card processing fees of online utility billing payments." And I'm gonna be discussing that in a little bit more. Page 40, these are little things, right? But these little things add up, and it's like a little rock in my shoe. So the header is not formatted properly, and that is all on me. I formatted those headers, and I missed that one. Now, I've jumped through all of the financials. They're good, and that's what our auditor attests to. And that's what we worked really diligently to make sure is accurate. 203, there should not be a header. It says it's blank, and by golly, it should have been blank. And the final one that I want to point out is on page 211 and 210. The second column says gross... Should say gross revenues. It should not identify whether correctly or incorrectly what fund revenues those are. It was just supposed to say gross revenues. We got it right on one, said gross water revenues, and then somehow we referenced solid waste revenues on the wastewater page. And that, again, it was an error. These are the things that keep me up at night, so I wanted to come straight out and show you that this is what I found after the hours of poring over this. Now, there are also a couple of items in here that might appear to be errors. They look like anomalies, but they're not, and there are good reasons behind them. I am not gonna go into the depth of the reasons because when I was kind of practicing this presentation with my accounting team, it was confusing for them even. So my accounting team is fantastic, and they have worked so many iterations of this book as far as the yellow highlights and the titles, but also the numbers. And doing all of the accounting behind each and every one of these numbers takes hours upon hours. Every day that they come into work, they're doing work. Our accounting techs, our payroll personnel, all of our AP. Everything that they do leads to these numbers that I'm reporting. So to me, when I look at these numbers, they're not just numbers. They tell a story. So one of the numbers that could tell... Use a little bit more, and I apologize if that's really small. On page 31, and this is a summary of our condensed statement of activities. And this is a summary of the government-wide financial statements. If you look at specifically, and I don't mean to pick on them, but if you look at police and fire, you might pause because it looks like they had 50% increase in expenses in the year. And that is crazy, right? And it doesn't match what was reported in their fund financials on page 122. So why is that? Well, I can tell you that it is not because they spent $5 million more. It is not because they're... And it's not because this is wrong. So which is it? Well, I'm gonna point you to page 122, and I'm gonna show you how on... And Chief Allen, I'm sorry to pick on you, but I'm gonna be using fire as my example because I can't go into every single line on this. But on fire, the actual amount is $9.6 million, 9623396. That is our fund financial balance. That's the expenses in fire. Okay? You're gonna see that number also on page 190. Halfway down, it says 9623 because it's reported in thousands. This page 190 is where you're gonna see the trends for the fund financials. It takes... This is where it gets really... It takes years of accounting wrestling with these concepts between fund financials and government-wide financial statements. Fund financials are your governmental current state of the fund. It is a modified accrual basis of accounting. It does... We do not look at long-term liabilities in fund financials. So when we're looking at a capital purchase, for example, it is booked as an expense in a fund financial. It's not booked as an asset and a liability. Again, try not to go too far in the weeds. What happens is that when you take this number on page 122 or 190, the 9,623,396, and then you have to report it on the government-wide financial statements, you have to do several conversion entries to be able to present the long-term piece on the government-wide. So those long-term pieces are things like Gatsby 68 pension unfunded liability, OPEB, which is the Gatsby 75. And of those, those right there swing very... They pendulum swing year to year, and we saw that in this between '23 and '24. In '23, the CALPERS had... Well, it was reported in '23, the investment returns of 21%. So it looks like FIRE only had $3 million of expenses because we took that investment gain and reduced the fund balance with that long-term liability, and it effectively decreased what we were reporting as expense. Whereas this year, if you look, it's the 9623396 to 8500886 isn't really that much of a difference. There are all kinds of, again, liabilities and Gatsby 75. And then the other piece on there that I didn't mention is that we have all the internal service funds. Those internal service funds are reported on the fund financial statements as enterprise... Well, not enterprise, proprietary funds. So they are... They're not included in governmental on the fund financial statements. But then when we go to the government-wide, they need to be reported as governmental. So we have to do a conversion entry to bring all of those numbers into the government-wide numbers. Okay, that was a very long explanation, but I wanted you to see that the numbers that are... That was a very long explanation, but I wanted you to see that the numbers that are reported are accurate. But if you want to do trend analysis, and if you want to see where things really are with the funds, you should be looking at page 122 and page 190. I do want to point out what I had said before, is that when you compare the two, recognize that page 190 is governmental, whereas page 122 is general fund. So the numbers aren't going to always tie. They do in FIRE because FIRE doesn't have any special revenue funds. Okay. The other anomaly is on page 122, since we're already there. There are a few variances, the negative variances with budget within the general fund by division. Now, as Ryan, our auditor, has said, our overall was well within budget for general fund. But there were a few line items that were over budget, and I want to explain that, and I believe that just, one of the items, the non-departmental, is, it's a budgeting tool that we use when we're onboarding new positions, and we aren't going to have to spend, it was in this case about $700,000. The budget here on that non-departmental is actually, should be closer to 1.1 for the, well, it shouldn't be. It's a mechanism that we use to book salary savings or to budget for salary savings. The one that is, again, we're not picking on FIRE. I'm really showing you that FIRE is doing a lot better than what it looks like on here because it shows 766,000 negative or over budget, but 360 of that was paying off the fire engine. They had three more years of $120,000 per year to return to fleet, and because management saw that general fund was good, made the management decision to pay that off early. In Finance and City Treasurer, that's my division, and that's what I was talking about with the credit card processing fees. We don't charge our utility billing customers to use their credit cards to pay their fees, and we're eating a lot more than what we had budgeted for. And that is an analysis that we're going to be doing here while we've already started. Matt has already done a great job with putting those numbers together, and I have a handle on the fact that this last year, the rate, the interest, the percentage that we're being charged has gone up significantly. And so we are going to be looking at alternatives or at least negotiating with our current provider to see what we can do to get that down. So those are the negative variances. And that summarizes, that's my presentation as far as what I know and what I've seen in the act for. I think it's a good product, and I'm proud of it. It's not perfect, but it never is. So any questions?
I've got a couple. First of all, I really agree. It's a good product. I really appreciate note 13. You definitely elaborated a lot more on it and filled in a lot of the questions that I had before in the past. I think it's important that you're writing not for current times, but also 20 years in the future when somebody has to look at this, the questions are answered. So I'd say, yeah, thank you, and I enjoyed reading it. I mean, it sounds weird, but I mean, some people didn't believe I did, but I got my pink tabs everywhere, don't I?
Hey, this is what I do for a living, so I can understand why you like it.
Yeah. That's what I did for fun. If you could, on page 122, elaborate a little bit more. What is the total amount that we're getting hit with, with credit card fee charges? I mean, how much?
So in...
Don't tell me the percentage because I know that's part of your negotiating, but maybe you could tell us how bad...
So in fiscal year 2024, our total fees, credit card fees, were $1,061,000. We collected in, because we do charge for any, for general billing, processing those credit card fees, we collected about $13,000.
Yeah, so it's a big hole.
We had budgeted 375,000, and it was a little bit over last year, but it wasn't enough over that it created alarms for me. This made me sit up and go, what's going on? And it is, and I'm immediately asking the questions, what is going on and what are we going to do to get this number down? And we'll bring that back as I do the analysis and my team does the analysis. We will bring it back to council for discussion with the public. You know, does it mean that we need to charge utility billing customers if they pay with a credit card? That's a big can of worms to open, and I don't know that I want to go there. So we need to look, we need to investigate, and we're not going to have any answers right off the top of our heads.
I had a question for you. Maybe you could elaborate on page 141. We have 1.9 million in right-of-way maintenance. Can you elaborate what that's, where that's coming from?
That is from our enterprise, enterprise fund reimbursement program, and those are costs allocated out to the various utilities, and it's going into our right-of-way maintenance in the pace of our streets.
That's what charging the trash trucks for driving on the streets and...
Trash trucks, buses, garbage, all of the utilities.
You're charging COLT now? Because I think COLT had a 10-year buy-in or something on that. Is COLT paying for that?
The transit department is being charged as well.
I knew that was something...
That was starting last year.
You started last year?
Started with the budget.
Okay. Under the water utility, you had due from other funds of $7.1 million. What is that?
Give me one minute.
In the middle of the page, halfway down, under non-current. Yeah. I got the first edition, you got the second edition.
So that is a, that is the $7.1 million advance to the solid waste utility for the big stormwater project that they're doing, that we are going out for bonds on. The electric has, water was the one that did a, an advance to them.
So is that an inter-fund transfer, or where was that also represented? Was that...
That's in the due to other, due to and due from other funds. Let me get to that page. Hold on. Well, you can see on page 59, like you said, the 71, 7.1 million under the water utility due from other funds. And then if you turn to page 61, under the solid waste utility, it shows advances from other funds. It's that 7.1 million there. And so that's where it balances out. You can see the solid waste, and I believe that we discuss it in the, in the solid waste section. I would, I would have to...
Should that be in note 13? Was that an inter-fund activity at all? Or is that not considered inter-fund activity?
I'm not sure if that was something that was eliminated. I'm looking over at my, at Matt and Ryan to help me with that one. It's possible that we should have had that on our inter-fund activities on page 111 as I look at that. I'm just reading the, I know that we discussed it in here, but I don't have the page off the top of my head. So it is discussed, and there was a resolution that went through council for that transfer. It is a reimbursement, a reimbursement...
There'll be a payoff someday to, back to the water department.
We are actually working with our municipal advisor to go out to bond this year.
That would significantly increase his water's reserve, then. They get their 7.1 million back, right?
Well, the, that is, that's just, doesn't change their revenues, though. That is just the cash balance.
Being reserved, right.
The cash balance. But it doesn't change the fact that the revenues came in a little bit lower than the expenses. This piece doesn't impact that.
I noticed that wastewater revenues were down significantly. Did we see what, almost a million? I think Matt and I were going over that. Down about a million. I was just wondering why, what happened with wastewater? It seems like everybody had to flush their toilets still, and it's a...
So we are bringing back the wastewater cost of service study, I believe in March, to be able to discuss the ongoing needs of wastewater and to review what's going on with their revenues.
I just wonder if that had to do something with the contracts with the other two people that we're connected with, or, because it was a significant, it was about 1.1 million in revenues that were down, and it seems, it's a five-year averaging or six-year averaging, so it shouldn't have been that volatile, I think, but, yeah, we can talk more later on that one, but it was...
A lot of the wastewater rates mimic the water usage, and so if I'm not, Bob, our financial services manager, he's got this down, and he'd be able to give you the answer right like this. I have a pretty good idea, which is that our, as, when there are heavy rain seasons, the sewer usage is less, or sewer, because they're linked, and so that's linked to the water usage. And so when they do the audit for the wastewater, it's impacted by the water usage. And so that...
One last one, I just, I had a bunch, and you did answer a bunch of them earlier, and so did Matt. I want to thank you. Matt did a great job as well. We spent three hours the other day going over this book. On page 186, we had a transfer that was in here. I was wondering if you could identify. It was down here, 23 versus 24. And I know that number's identified in other places in the book, but this transfer that's down here, kind of middle, 40% down on the page?
Mm-hmm.
So it went from 2,75,000 to 2.374. Do you know what that transfer is?
I'm going to need to go to the page that it's in.
I think it might be out of the electric fund. I think it's identified in a couple other spots in here.
Let me go to the face of the financials. That's where I, let me see, it's electric.
Is it the electric transfer, utility transfer, 2.418? No, it's 2374.
So the electric transfer is 2418902.
Yeah.
And it's possible that, because this is a consolidated number on page, what page were we on again?
Page 186 versus page 111.
So this is general revenues, business-type activities, transfers. So this would be the transfers from all of the different business-type activities. And so you would have to look at across the board. It looks like... It's, I'm guessing that it, let me see, 24, 23, yeah. It's netting out with the transfers in that you see under other enterprise funds, the 44, 746 on page 64. And so, yes, the question that you're coming to, I believe, is what is this transfer out of electric? And if you look at page 63, you can see it shows that the 2.4 million is transferred out of electric. And then if you look at general fund, I believe...
And that's the annual...
That's the utility rate of return transfer. It is in a...
So it's 2.418 million taken from the electric account process to the general fund, correct?
Right, and it is a established transfer that has been on the books for many years. It's utility rate of return. It is, it is...
Since 1994.
Yeah, with compliance with Prop 26. And I'm, I have more verbiage on that, but I don't find the page.
All right.
That answers the question. That's what it is, yes.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure what the 2374 was.
It should have been recorded, it was recorded last year. You can read it on 111, too, at the bottom. It's a bottom bullet on 111.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's 2418. That one, but the other one on 186 is 2374. All right. Thank you, I do...
Does that answer your questions?
Yeah. You did good. I think it's important. Like you say, we're still not meeting our two-month reserve fund. I know we got a lot of money, came in with the ARPA money that was able to rescue us, but we don't really have a plethora of extra sales tax revenue. In fact, maybe you could comment on our sales tax revenue. What happened with that recently?
So, you know, sales tax revenue did decrease a little bit this last year, and that is across the board. We actually didn't decrease as much as some of the other cities around us. And, you know, the, I'll leave it to the economists to argue over why spending was down in the different areas and so forth, but we are, in talking with our consultants, we do expect that there will be a slight increase in the next fiscal year. I would say probably between 1.5 and 2% is what I would be estimating, so not a large amount by any means. And we still are seeing property taxes increase, which is good. So I wouldn't say that we are in any kind of dire condition, but we certainly aren't rolling in the dough.
And if you could, with me, one last number, probably the favorite number I saw in here was the per capita income number.
Oh, yeah.
That was actually on page 213. It was stagnant for a while, just creeping along, and it went from, well, we don't have the 2024 number yet, and hopefully it's still up, but we saw from 24,800 to 27,686. So that's actually a big bonus for the people. Thank you. Does anybody else have more questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Bridge.
First, obviously, it's a diamond, so let me start with that. I want to make sure I heard correctly on a couple of things. Did I hear you say that the solid waste, which was negative, is on a path to self-correct?
It is, it is, there is a plan for correction. It is, you saw the turnaround this year in that it is not as below revenues as it was in prior years. Part of what happened with solid waste was that we brought the rate study, and council, understandably, we want to be able to balance the needs of our citizens and our customers with the need of the utility. And so I don't know if you guys remember the conversations that we had brought three or four scenarios, and council decided on one that was a little bit more level rather than taking the bite at the beginning. And so rather than get in there and fix the problem the first year, it's going to take a couple of years to do that, but it is on track, and it is expected that it will, our revenues will begin to level out with the expenses.
Okay. This is a little bit higher level than, you know, does this number match that? I heard you say something to the effect that CalPERS creates volatility due to the to the change in interest that they've been able to earn or not earn. And I think I heard that equipment, early payment also caused some volatility in the, the numbers. The fire department paid off. Is there any other large elements in the budget that do that, that create this anomaly when you come to finalize the books?
So I would say that the GASB 68, which is our pension liability calculation, is the most unknown as far as what it's going to do year to year. They do their best to, with the, with the accounting to level it out. So for example, when there was a, what we saw was a $22, $22 million. I believe it was a decrease to the liability. If I'm remembering, I've got two different years in my head. And so the decrease to the liability and it is being, being recognized over a period of five years. It's been amortized over five years. But then the next year, there's a, it goes the other way because it has a, there was a 5.8%, a negative 5.8% return. And so it missed its target again. So one year it's up by, by 15%. The next year it's down by 10 or 12%. And so you see this shifting and they try to amortize that. They, it's amortized over five years and layered in there. And so it's not as impactful, but it still does impact on the years. And, and add to that that it's delayed. So CalPERS will report their, their hit or miss of their investment returns. And then it isn't until two years later that we see that on the, on the GASB 68 reporting.
So, I'm not going to say this all in the right technical.
That's okay.
Jargon, but I think of CalPERS having two components. One was a past liability and then a current liability.
Absolutely.
And a few years ago, we passed a tax increase that perhaps all, or a significant portion of that was to go retire the, the past liability. Or, and perhaps it's buried in here and I apologize if it is, but are we getting anywhere near, close to paying off that past liability? And does that past liability increase or decrease the volatility of the missed target? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And it, so for your, if you're going, if you want to read in depth, I, I recommend note six.
I'm sorry, note six?
Note six is where it talks about the pension plans. But what I can tell you is that when, when we passed the I-2020, we entered into a 15-year repayment plan. Now that was for the debt or the, that existed at that time. And so we are on track, on track to that, but our payments are increasing every year by approximate, approximately $600,000 a year for the next, I believe it's another four years. I may be give, give or take a year on that. So yes, we're making progress. No, we're nowhere near. But we have the tax revenues that are helping the I-2020 that are in line with that, that payment. And so we are, we will be bringing forward in the next few months, a, a 10-year financial forecast that's going to be looking at some of those CalPERS payments so that it isn't just this big monster in the sky. And so that we can actually look at and see what if we make extra payments, what would happen or, or so, so forth. And can we make extra payments? We're on a pretty aggressive payment plan right now as it is. And so, you know, we, we need to be able to also run, run the city, right? And so that, that is the, the, when I talk about GASB 68 or the UAL or the CalPERS liability, that's the past number that we're talking about.
Okay. And one last question, just for me to kind of focus my head around that because that, that's always bothered me, this whole CalPERS thing, which I don't begrudge anybody getting their retirement. It's not about that. Is it fair to say that if we had not done the tax and if we had not allocated it to the CalPERS, that we would have to be taking that out today of our general operating funding? Where would that money come from if we didn't?
Well.
I'm trying to understand.
We are taking it out of our general operating money. The tax comes in to our general and then we pay out of that general. So.
Money's fungible though, so.
So I think that. I, I, I'm trying to get, I, I, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. Yes, it's good that we pass that tax. We wouldn't have the money that we need to be able to pay the liability for our CalPERS. It is not the only thing that that tax is covering and at least for right now. And it will be more and more paying towards that CalPERS as each year we have a higher amount.
Okay.
City manager, do you have something to fill in?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, you're, you're on point with what you were talking about. And when they passed PEPRA, that's when they isolated the old pension liabilities. And what would have happened if we didn't do that? We would have been paying that debt all the way out to 2045 instead of paying it off around 2034. So that was the big advantage. And the amount of interest we saved when we calculated at the beginning of this was close to $20 million. So that's $20 million we wouldn't have to pay in interest payments over that duration. But you're right. You're pretty close on what you said.
Okay, thank you.
Can you get amortization schedules? I imagine those are still applicable, the ones you passed out six years ago?
Yeah, they're still available.
That's on that, that's on that debt because I think it's, the general fund is about $400,000 more.
And you can see, you can even see on the newer ones too, you can see the payment schedules getting smaller and smaller and smaller. We're still making a pretty big payment. We don't have to pay it out till 2045.
It only took maybe 10 or 15% of that tax money went to that, once you refinanced it.
Yeah, and it started at there, but little by little, it's going up little by little because they, like she was talking about, they phased that in over 30 years and we refinanced it to 15 years. So yeah, it gets extended, but it keeps getting larger and larger and larger each year. So.
So you save more and more in the interest?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I did want to thank you for all the good work and the people that supported your staff. It's an excellent product. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck, real quick, I, I just wanted to ask you, Chris, everybody is under the impression in town that, you know, marijuana's making us rich. I know that we've had a decrease in tax. What was our, our revenue on, on cannabis taxes?
So let's, if we, turn me, turn with me if you will.
She likes her book.
I'm trying to get to the.
I didn't figure everybody in the community was going to be shuffling through their book right now.
192. Thank you. So yeah, 192 shows you the, the revenues were, I'm sorry, 1.1.6 million dollars this year. And it's in, on one of the.
That's down from 2 million last year.
Yes. It is.
What is that? 6%? 4%?
It is a decrease. And I think that you're looking at multiple factors in that because you, you have to, I think that we all observed that there was a uptick in, in demand during the pandemic.
And money.
And, and then the pandemic ended and everybody went back to work. So.
I think one of your, yeah, they had to go back. I think one of your complications on 91 that, that, that has been a trend I've been watching is the number of inactive members that are currently receiving benefits is 428 now. And you have 281 active members. And you have 263 people that are inactive members entitled but not yet receiving benefits. So at any day, 263 people could all of a sudden claiming. And we don't know when it's going to happen. We don't know what it's going to be. They can estimate or calculate. But six years ago, when I started looking at this number, they were almost at parity between active and inactive members. And you're seeing that, that, the change is drastic. And that's one of the, it's a target that they're trying to hit. But how do you hit a target that's moving so fast in five dimensions?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't want to be an actuary.
Yeah. Councilmember Ball, did you have a question?
Just a couple of quick comments, just on the cannabis thing. I think obviously the numbers are a little bit down. Obviously people went back to work. But let's also remember that the county, at one time, Lompoc was a little bit more of the destination because it wasn't available widely throughout the county. We're seeing a lot more dispensaries throughout the county. So folks that might've driven a long distance to come here maybe are shopping in their own backyard. So we should be sensitive to that. And to that point, I would, again, this is a revenue source that this city is dependent upon to a certain percentage. I'd be curious over time about projections, right? We try to project everything else. We try to, you know, if this trend is heading in a certain way, I'd be curious how that affects us in a couple of years in general. And then I, I think some good points were brought up. There's still volatility and uncertainty when it comes to the idea of the sales tax. And there's no pressure at the moment we have a sunset, but we don't have a guarantee. We do, I think, I understand that all things being equal, CalPERS hits critical mass in maybe four or five years in terms of that top payment. And then I think we hope that it starts to roll down drastically. If that's the case, then we would have more funds in our general fund that we could use within our city before it sunsets. But again, my fear is that, that number might change. There might be new volatility, new challenges with that. So again, at this point, I don't think it's strategic to talk about the sunset. That's still 10 years away. But for all of us that have said, we need to start thinking big. We need to start thinking about 10 years, 20 years and 30 years. How are we setting up our community for success? Just a thought that as we get closer to sunset, that's going to create some issues with our dependability, with revenue streams, and things could be different. So I just hope we always stay conscious of that. Even though it's way out there, we're pulling in six, seven, eight million dollars a year into the general fund from that sales tax. So if our bills go down, that's great. But if the sales tax goes away, that's going to be a big hole too. So I hope we have a thoughtful conversation about that sooner than later. But I appreciate all the work that goes into this. Expecting perfection is impossible. You guys put a lot of hard work into this. I appreciate that, along with all the explanations. And I'm glad to see our cities in, in fairly healthy shape. There's a lot of cities around us that aren't. So I'm proud of the work that you've put in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you much. Thank you too.
Thank you.
Both of you too. All right. Parks and Recreation Division, you're up. Who we got?
Mayor.
Nope. What we got?
Before we start this item, I wanted to announce that this is going to be a discussion of possible sites for a fireworks show this year. One of the sites that we're going to be considering in this presentation is River Park. And Mayor Mosby owns property within 500 feet of River Park. So when we, in the presentation given by Ms. Alarcon, it's fine for Councilmember Mosby to be on the di, Mayor Mosby to be on the dais. But when we get into the individual discussions of each one of the sites, when we get to River Park, Mayor Mosby, because of his real property interest, should step down from the dais and leave the room.
Okay.
Kate, you ready?
I'm ready.
You can do it from down there. All right.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public, per council request, we are bringing back a discussion for the 2025 Fourth of July fireworks show. So items for consideration tonight, staff took a look at seven different sites. All sites were evaluated and public safety has some major concerns with every single one of the sites. So as we go through the four sites that were viable, they, police and fire will provide specifics to each of the sites and what their concerns are and any potentials to mitigate their concerns, if any. One of the greatest hurdles, and I'm sorry to disappoint you, we just found this out today. The pyrotechnic vendor currently only has available July 3rd for operators. So all of their July 4th operators are booked. There is, we reached out to some neighboring jurisdictions and tried to get information about other pyrotechnic vendors throughout the state. There's one other potential vendor. We have inquiry out to them to find out if they have any vendors available for July 4th. It is late in the game. So typically booking your Fourth of July aerial fireworks show is done well in advance of where we are today. But we'll proceed with looking at the sites and then you guys can have some discussion about, do you want to proceed with a July 3rd, Fourth of July show? Or we just select a slot, a, a potential site and then take a look at the other one potential vendor and see if they get back to us. So as I said, we looked at seven different sites and I have all of that information here. We narrowed it down to four sites, River Park, Lompoc High School, the airport and Riverbend Park. So I'm going to start with River Park. So there's an aerial of Riverbend Park along with the, do you have to leave now? You want me to wait? Not yet, right?
Mayor.
Not yet.
It's accept, it's fine for you to stay during the presentation. It's just when council gets into the discussion of each one of the sites. Unless you want to, you can.
So River Park is pictured there and you see that the aerial show site for where we would launch the fireworks from is the very, very, very back parking lot. You see where the pond is there on the map. As I had mentioned, fire has concerns with every site, as you can imagine, given the current California wildfire situation. And so this site, its proximity to high fire hazard zones, given its proximity to the riverbed. And you see the vegetation there at the park. PD does have some concerns regarding the traffic with this site. It only has one point of ingress and egress. And so you might recall, there was an event hosted there several years back where there was a, a traffic collision and some difficult issues that occurred. And that was a, an event hosted during the daylight hours. And so there is some concern because it's pitch black out there. From a recreation perspective and hosting the event, we can mitigate the, the darkness with some portable lights and make it work. This site would allow us to have a ticketed site where we could charge for viewing. So that would offset some of the, the cost as opposed to having a, a show that was just, we were unable to like gate and get tickets for. So that helps us cover the cost of the show. The other site for consideration, we, and a lot of this has been very much put together at the last minute. We were able to meet with the high school district just today. And they had several hurdles and conditions that they would place upon the site. But that would be, it's not the traditional site that we're used to. They want to protect their asset. So it would be in the ballfield on the back side, as you see pictured here, would be the launching. would be the launching area. They will require their loss and prevention insurance policy will not cover an aerial fire show at all. So they will require that the city take all of the liability associated with both the fire risk and any, you know, trip, fall, other types of liabilities that occur, could occur at hosting an event there and ensure that we have sufficient coverage. We, we as staff from a recreation perspective are concerned that, and we haven't priced out or budgeted out the site yet, but we are concerned just because there's also other requirements onsite fire response. So they would want a fire truck onsite for the duration of the aerial show. And then also onsite security, not just there at the actual event, but also to kind of keep people from getting in through the various points of entry on the, at the school site. And then the other concern we have from the recreation and programming perspective, and these are just concerns, I'm letting you know, is that this would only be for the 2025 show. They advised us that a 2026 show would not be feasible because they have development plans for that site that would make it less open space. We heard back just today from the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA. The airport would be a feasible site. There, you'll see in the photo, there is a lot of vegetation. So as you can imagine, huge fire risk with this site. This, we would also like to conduct as a ticketed show. But we're not really sure if that would work out with how to fence things in and where seats would be. So that one has the potential of being a free show. So there would be no cost recovery. And so what we got as far as monies in the coffers would have to cover all of the cost and no tickets. And then Riverbend Park, I'll show you that one. You see there, I don't know, we could get creative, shifted over a little bit. We're trimming a lot of that vegetation. Parks is doing that. But I, as you can see, that's, I mean, major fire concern on that site. In addition to that, traffic constraints, given it only has one way in and one way out. And then this one also gets really, really dark at night. So this would be the same as River Park where we would have to pay for lights, portable lights to be brought in. Was this paid or ticketed? This one is one where we could recover the cost of those sorts of requirements. And we could cover them because it could be a ticketed event. And if you would like, we could talk about any of these. If you want specific questions for PD and Fire, you want me to flip to something, we can start having discussion about the various sites.
I have a question.
Sure.
We talked, you talked quite a bit about ticketing and not ticketing. Perhaps it's been in a previous meeting. But could you educate me on what the cost is and what you thought we might get in tickets?
Good evening. Good evening. Typically in the past, it was anywhere between $8 for adults and $4 for children. We typically averaged at the high school about between 2,000 and the 3,000 entries. At these sites, it probably would be a little less because of the parking, the restrictions. So probably about 1,500 people we would think about at those sites. But it would just depend on parking. We would try to do as much, the pre-sale, so we wouldn't be charging onsite. So you give a little bit of break for the pre-sale. So we could take that money at the rec center and people would just have tickets and they could get in that way.
And what's the cost?
So we don't have a total show cost. Each one is dependent on each site. So we know the cost per minute for the aerial show. If, so again, we only have the cost estimate for the aerial show to occur on July 3rd. We are waiting for a response from a vendor who may have an opening to do a show on July 4th. So right now, you don't even have a July 4th vendor. That's where we're at right now.
Is it 5,000, 50,000, 500,000? What kind?
For the amount of time that we typically do a show, it's about 25,000. And to put it into perspective, we have about 38,000, I believe, in the budget this year from what we've collected. You know, renting the lights, having the staffing there, all of that. We haven't built the budget out yet because we don't know.
Okay. And so what I just heard is it'll add another 20,000 for all of that? I'm trying to get a rough order of magnitude as to what these events cost.
For the, for the show, staff, lights, and the security, it would probably be about another 10,000 and then whatever the cost for fire, for being onsite as well. And any cost to the insurance or the cover needs if we chose the high school, the location.
And the 38K that you, I think I heard you say, that, that came in through multiple years, if I'm not mistaken?
I believe so. I think we typically have, correct me if I'm wrong, Mario, but don't we typically only have about 25-ish? And then we usually, usually we have more time and we plan in advance. And we solicit donations from, you know, the Schumash, Kiwanis, different groups. And then because we try to do the ticket sales, you know, historically at Hoots Stadium and things like that, we were able to do ticket sales. And that kind of helps offset a lot of those costs. So we kind of make it balance out.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Bridge, Chief Fallon over here. Just to give you some context also, it will be a requirement on our end that there is a staffed engine company present at any one of these sites. That will be according to the master fee schedule. So that rate is $142 an hour. In addition to the pyrotechnic permit that will be required, which is around $1,100 to hold the event at all.
Don't we get a significant amount of money from the sale of Safe and Sane? That was supposed to go towards fireworks show?
That's it, 38,000.
About how much a year? I mean, you have.
About 25,000 a year. So it's a little more because I think there may have been a little rollover from a prior year.
I haven't seen a new fund lately, but there was over 100,000 in that account not too long ago in the fireworks account. I don't know. Anyhow, yeah, it sounds like you have a lot of money already, but.
Mayor, I just wanted to give a reminder that questions like this are fine right now. But before we start discussing the pros and cons of each site, we need to take public comment.
Okay, I'll take, I'll wait.
Any more questions? You can, you can ask general questions. Till we deliberate, you can ask general questions.
I think I'll be moving into deliberation.
Okay, very good. Any other?
Yeah, maybe just one quick question, and then I'll have a few more after. So on a, just to clarify, on a, one of our best events for fireworks that we did ticketed, the total amount that we might, roughly, that we might have gotten, is that seven, eight grand? Is that, or how much would you say? 12?
From the ticketing price only?
Most tickets we've ever sold, eight bucks a ticket, whatever it was. What, is that 10 grand roughly, 12 grand?
Roughly between like 5,000 or 6,000 probably.
Okay, got it. All right. I'll ask more questions, but let's hear from the public first.
All right. Very good. All right. We have public comment. Public comment. We're trying. All right, we'll close public comment.
All right, then I'll ask, Mike.
Councilmember Bridge.
Yeah, it's not so much as a question. It looks to me like we're going to have to go back and do more evaluation. At least seems to me. I would like to have included, and this is probably pie in the sky, but what I'm hearing, I think I heard, is we raise on the order of 20 to 25,000 dollars a year in safe and sane fireworks. I wonder if we couldn't use that money to start a program with one of the local schools, perhaps the high school or the college, for drone events. And sure, the first year probably wouldn't be too cool. But if they could buy 10K worth of drones every year and they got a program that allowed them to learn how to do drones. And they're pretty impressive. I've seen a couple of them. So I'd like to throw, if we go back to evaluation, if the council tonight doesn't make a decision to go forward on one of the others, I'd like to throw that in the evaluation pot at least at a preliminary level and see if the schools would be interested in such a program.
Do you think that would be restrictive, the city attorney? I know some of the funds had restrictions on that were coming in for fireworks sales. I don't know.
I think what the language is in the ordinance or the agreement is that the funds have to be used for a fireworks event. So if this.
Fourth of July event.
Enforcement.
Sorry, not fireworks event, Fourth of July event. So it doesn't have to be fireworks.
Three to July then, or could we use it for the 3rd of July?
I think it could be used on the 3rd of July. But it can also be used as a drone show because it doesn't have to be fireworks. Fourth of July event. And so if this money is, I think it's reasonable to say that if you use it in that way, it's going towards an eventual event.
It'd limit our restrictivity with something like that. That's totally out of the box.
I just wanted to add that when you guys are thinking about this, what we've been doing is a free event in the park, Fourth of July celebration, that utilizes all of the funds. So that's also an option to consider in lieu of the fireworks show. So the drone idea, but just if you wanted just to come back with an evaluation of options, wanted to make sure we remembered there is another one.
Councilmember Starbuck, you had something?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, Councilmember Bridge, we've got drones. We're hiring them to take pictures of everybody that's shooting fireworks. So if we can combine those drones with your drones.
Yeah, I.
Councilmember Bridge.
I think the beauty of Sky Event, for lack of a better phrase, is that it's an alternative to everybody throwing off their own fireworks. So that's why I kind of went to, well, it's the same as, kind of. And I also think that that's a recurring funding that could go into a program that would be a really cool educational program as well, so.
Mayor Mosby, sir, Chief Fallon. I just, sorry. I just, I wanted to, and these are all great points, sir, that you're talking about with, with an alternative to an aerial fireworks program. And there's just probably a few things that we need to consider going forward. One of those for sure is on public perception. So coming off the heels of the incidents that occurred in Southern California with the Palisades incident, I can tell you, as the fire chief, I've received multiple calls even while, why we are doing safe and sane fireworks sales. So, you know, we can defend it in some capacity because it does exist in our ordinance, and that is why we do it. But I'll tell you, as Lompoc City's fire chief, you hired me to be a risk manager, as you did, Chief Martin. And so it's our responsibility to assess, to protect, and to assess any of these hazards that exist in the community and to mitigate them to the best of our abilities. Some of these are preventable, some emergencies are not, and we do our best to maintain them. But when there's something that is preventable and we can see with some foresight that it could potentially create an issue, then I would certainly have to speak up. And there are, you know, I went through our state fire code. I went through NFPA, the California State Code of Regulations. And yeah, there are certain parameters that allow us to do that, but it doesn't mean that we should or it would be a good look for the city, quite honestly. So there's all kinds of information here. I mean, we even went back and tracked what trending weather was for last year around the same time, what are our prevailing winds, temperatures, relative humidity, all these things that impact wildland fire behavior. So I would urge you to certainly consider those things as we go forward. Ultimately, it will be up to you. But for sure, I have a responsibility to at least put those in front of you to consider.
Councilmember Ball.
Sure. And I really appreciate the chief saying a couple of those things. And I'm not going to make everyone happy with everything that I say. So let's just, let's just, I'm going to try to thread a needle here because I've heard it from both sides. First off, I was a kid raised here. And one of the favorite things every year, I go to the July 4th fireworks. We look forward to it every year. It's just something really, really exciting. Times have changed. We have a lot more wildfires right in our own backyards, high winds. A whole city can burn down in hours. So that's, that's very stressful. But I also see, and hear me out on this. I live over on Walnut, around L and M. It's a very exciting area in July. Very exciting. There's fireworks right over our house constantly. I still don't know who lit them off because I can't catch them. So good luck to our drones. But I do start to think about if there was some sort of centralized event. All things being equal, if it could be good enough, if it could be exciting, would that rebalance everyone that is distracted that goes and buys illegal fireworks? Would some of them maybe not go that way and maybe go to the show? I don't know. I really don't know. So that's something that I think about. I think the drone idea is great if we can find maybe a vendor. My other fear is, well, when there's 300 drones in the air and someone starts lighting fireworks trying to take out a couple of drones, then we have an issue there too. Now it comes down to locations and viability, right? I think it's pretty obvious there's a couple of these where those outlines, those little dotted lines that you have, encroach into obviously some very dangerous areas. But a couple of those other locations have, have the space. Doesn't mean that it's safe. But we talk about mitigation. And we talk, is there the possibility to mitigate? Well, yes, but those mitigation efforts come with a cost. So I guess for me and the rest of council is what if the cost for this, and you guys be, you say, look, you want to keep the town safe. It may cost you 30 grand. Well, let's go find maybe a sponsor that can cover maybe an area that we might mitigate. So I, one other thing I'll put about locations is I have a real issue with the egress, ingress egress issue. If there's one road in and out, it's a disaster waiting to happen. I was there for that daytime event at River Park. 发生了 crash in front, thousands of people can't even come and go. That's, that's not, that's a no-go for me. So I look at the high school, and I know that's temporary. I'm not even sure if we can find a vendor. But then I also look at the airport. They've had lots of events out there, and I know there's issues. May require some mitigation. But then I think about tickets. Well, tickets, this is a poor town here, not much, not rich here. So I start to think, well, how can we thread a needle and have maybe an airport event? And because we don't want to have ingress egress issues and there's not a ton of parking, city has transportation options. Could we not shuttle people from a place to park in the middle of town and shuttle them out safely to the airport? I'm not saying that's the way it should shake out or not. But I want the community to just be thoughtful. It isn't a. It isn't a yes or no, there's gonna be safe and sane fireworks, we're gonna do our best to get illegal fireworks, but they're gonna be here. Maybe a judgment should be, do we take on the risk of some centralized event that we can mitigate those risks, and would we see a little bit less of the illegal activity? I don't know, I'm not a professional, but I did wanna put those terms out there, and maybe our chiefs can respond to a little bit of that rhetoric.
Yeah, good, thank you for your comments. Last year, from July 3rd through July 4th into the 5th, the police department ran on over two hundred calls that were just firework related, right? That's not all the other problems that we have to deal with in the community, those are two hundred additional calls to our workload for ten officers to have to handle on top of everything else they have to handle in a twenty-four hour period of time. We do not force hire for the Fourth of July, it's a holiday, and if people wanna volunteer to come in and work it, they definitely have that opportunity, but we don't force them to. So what I would say is, even with the events that we've had in the past that we have organized in hopes that it would curtail the call volumes, and trust me, not everybody calls about the fireworks, because they just say why, right? But of the two hundred calls that we had, the organized event just didn't curtail it at all, and it went up significantly from the year before, and we had those events in the year before as well, so just to share that information with you.
In terms of maybe, maybe responding to the idea of mitigating risks, even though it may come with a higher cost?
Yeah, so any, any event like that, we would attempt to mitigate any environmental hazard that would exist, so obviously clearance is a big deal for us, proper distance for a fallout zone, that, and we say a minimum of a hundred and fifty, that does not take into account any wind factors as well. Temperatures, fuel continuities in the surrounding areas certainly plays a factor, and then I would say, you know, if we're talking about the high schools as an example, I'd say any type of environmental impact as it relates to the residents in the area is certainly something to consider too. So yes, all of those could potentially be mitigated, and as I said earlier, if our job is to function as a risk manager, then of course it's my responsibility, as it is Chief Martin's, to share those concerns with you. You know, you do your best to mitigate what you can, but I'll tell you, last year on the Fourth of July, we had a rogue firework that ended up on the south side of town out near McLeedow, that's not our area, but we responded to it, and it's a, it's a resource hog, honestly, and so it pulled all of our Lompoc resources to that area, and it's just what it is, so it's, you know, it's certainly a risk that we take.
Thank you for that, I've shared my thoughts and I'll-
Can I just jump in real quick too, if you don't mind? So I agree with you with the ingress and egress issue as the chief of police, that's one of my biggest concerns, if there was an emergency inside of one of those areas that only had one way in and one way out, how would we get people out safely so we didn't cause the potential of death? So the, anything that's along the edge of the city, I am absolutely not a fan of. So then we look back at the city areas, the high school. One of the requirements of the high school from the school district was, is that we take on all the responsibility for any damage, any problems, or any things that happens on the campus at the time of the event, and that we barricade off and keep people out of any areas not designated for the show. Christie, could you bring up the picture of the high school for me? Alright, so if we're gonna be doing the event here at the high school on the baseball field area, everybody probably is pretty familiar with that from an aerial view, that means we gotta keep everybody off of the campus. And you can see the way the classrooms are set up and the school is built, that's a heavy ask for us, which increases the city's liability for anything that would happen if somebody, somebody decided to do something not nice to the school. It's just a concern I have as chief, and I wanted to share that with you when you look at this location as an option, but this is gonna be a heavy lift, and probably an expense that you would have to consider for the security company that would come in to keep people out of those areas and manage that for the city.
Councilmember Vega.
Couple of comments here, I think we're, we all agree we want the celebration and we wanna have fun and everything, but I think if we put our common sense hat on, twenty-twenty-five is not gonna happen, the way we're talking about here, I think if they don't have a vendor, then we can't have a show, you know, so maybe we should look at a couple of other options and see what can we do this July 4th that would make everybody happy and celebrate, and possibly in a safer way, since we don't have anything or no vendor at the time, so I think we're kinda like trying to beat our heads against the wall for something that's not going to happen, I don't think it's necessary right now. I think with the fire, the way it is, and we have the water shortage, and we have a couple of things, insurance wise, I'm in a different business, I have to be cognizant that there is risk, I think that we should put our thinking caps on and see what we can do. I know we had a Fourth of July show at Ryan Park, but Safe and Sane wasn't allowed, correct? So maybe we need to take a look and see if maybe what we do have here, if it can be allowed and still, you know, still show your wares and public safety wise and whatever if we're going to have an event, because I'm sure everybody would rather be home, even public safety, there are people too, but if we're gonna have an event, let's do something to showcase Lompoc and see what we can do safety wise, because I think the noise and everything is not in everybody's ballpark. So I think if we focus more on, right now, I think the conversations, where the best areas are if we do have it, you know, the chief's not a fan of outline areas, even though the airport is probably the less restrictive of any area, you know, in my opinion, you know, I think something out there would probably be the number one choice in my opinion, you know, if any brush was mitigated, being that it's in the riverbed and stuff. But I think those conversations are something we should have, but we shouldn't ignore the risks, and I think what's gonna happen here is, I think I had this conversation with somebody else, I think the people that have those, the bombs, you know, the just huge ones, you know what I'm saying? I don't think anybody's for that, okay? I mean, I'll just say for myself, I don't think noise wise, whether it's for animals, PTSD, I don't care what your ailment is, even if your work, shift work, I don't think people are for that, okay? I think once in a while we have a missile go off, and people are a little bit bothered by it, but they know it's a boom, and it's good for Lompoc, and it's good for the city, and it's good for our future, so I'd kind of encourage us to have a conversation on what the best choices would be, if it's not gonna be twenty-twenty-five, it's maybe twenty-twenty-six, if there is a good option, but I think we should probably, if we're gonna have an event which is already planned and is already there, then Safe and Sane maybe should be part of that to enhance our get-together on Fourth of July. I know we tried to have a clean thing where there's no sparks, there's no nothing, but these things don't fly, you know what I mean? And I think if you're gonna try and encourage people to go over there and buy Safe and Sane and actually donate to the nonprofits and to the city coffers, why don't we encourage the sales, or maybe it'll take some of the people that are gonna shoot the illegals off the street just for the get-together? I may be in the clouds here, but that's kind of my, those are my thoughts.
Thank you guys for putting a lot of stuff together, I think in light of everything that's been going on, definitely in this state, and water temperature and all that, I think you did your really good job finding some great potential locations, but I think Councilmember Bridge might hit on something that would be really good, that we could, maybe you guys could help investigate, I know it's something that's definitely out of the box to put together, I know that to go do a drone show, rent one's a quarter million dollars or something like that, but we have this revenue stream coming in, and this could enhance, it's not out there yet, but you guys have a rec club, recreation that's going on, maybe through you guys, maybe you could come back with something on that? You have money coming in for a show, and maybe we could start something new, that way that we have a show and educate some people how to fly the drones and maybe everybody coming from everywhere, come see us. I just, maybe, would you, maybe a motion that you come back with something like that, could you do that for us?
Could I get some clarity on that, so?
I'll let Councilmember Bridge fill you in on that, he had the idea.
Well, you'll make your motion, no, my clarity is gonna be from all of you. Do you want us to hold the current pot of money that would have went to a twenty, what year are we in, twenty-twenty-five event, or fireworks show, and hold that in the coffers, and then evaluate how our agreement reads and what we're allowed to do with those funds, see if that's something we need to amend, and then start doing the footwork on outreach to the school district if there is a potential collaboration, but not spend those monies, and allow them to accumulate, then what will end up happening is they will accrue with the twenty-twenty-six fireworks show money, maybe giving us a good startup amount, and then see who we're collaborating it with, or if we gotta get creative in recreation and create our own program. Is that accurate?
I think that was very clear.
Okay.
I think the only caveat I would give to that, if Mario's already got a plan for something in Ryan Park for a Bring the Kids Day or something on Fourth of July, and we need to put some nominal money in that, I'm not opposed to that.
Well, currently, the last two to three years, we've been doing the Fun Day in the Park, and that's probably been averaging over twenty thousand dollars for that, so that would take all the money that's coming in every year from the net sales taxes, since it is a free event, so we would probably have to eliminate the Fun Day in the Park before the Fourth of July to pursue that.
Yeah, well, I'd prefer to reserve the money, but I don't wanna damage a program here, you know, so, so yes, you were correct in your analysis of what my council request would be, and if I get two more guys, and then I'll be happy to work with you on that if that helps.
I can give you a second.
Mr. Mayor, you know, do we want them to spend the money on Ryan Park this year if they have a plan, you know, it's also, you get what I'm saying? It's kinda like they have a plan to spend twenty thousand dollars at Ryan Park for an event that's non-fireworks, which is basically a copy of last year, and we're not even referencing that, okay? Do we want that expenditure?
I think that's what the discussion, they just, Christie asked, and I don't, I think we'd save the money to enhance the-
I didn't get that clarity from Mario, that it sounds like they already have a plan to spend this money.
No, they didn't.
Is that true?
Yeah, so our current plan was to do the Fun Day in the Park again, but if we go this route, then we wouldn't be able to-
So that's our current plan, but if we're gonna stop it, then it's different.
I would, I would say, when I saw the videos of what last year was, and I think you had maybe two hundred and fifty to three hundred people that came through that weren't vendors, weren't part of the deal, so I would have to say that you spent twenty thousand dollars, and there was two to three hundred people that came, so I say that, that that event wasn't moving forward like you anticipated, so I would say save the money for, try to enhance this so we could actually have a drone show, and if we, a couple of years into this, we probably, maybe we could have something, as you guys can figure out, but I would second his motion to move forward with this. You got a third? Are you, oh, Councilmember Starbuck, you can chime in on your third.
Well, I wasn't a third yet, I just wanted to say to staff, you know-
Mario, it sounds like you get to stay home on Fourth of July, what the heck?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, a couple of years ago, we were trying to do something on July 5th, and this year you wound up getting it on the 3rd, so I guess that if we were to wait a year, we might actually hit it on the 4th too, and if we can do it on the 4th, I'll give you a 3rd.
Alright, there we go, we sweated through that one. We tried. Alright, thank you for that presentation now. We good? What's next here? Alright, we have an oral communication coming up. This is on anything in the city other than what's coming up on agendas, we'll try to get through this, guys. Anybody for general or communications? Nope, close that, then we go to appointments, item number three, establishment of Lompoc Theater Project Ad-Hoc Committee, and Councilmember Starbuck's gotta go, because Mr. City Attorney fill us in.
I'll go ahead and recuse because of a real property within five hundred foot.
You probably got the pizza back there too, huh? Alright. Who's going to, do we have any staff that's leading this?
I'll take it, Mayor Mosby. We provided a staff report, really it's just as background and information so that council can consider, not really consider, but you had the whole history, since we do have, it's been a long time since we discussed the theater, and so it was just to give the background, and then also to, I'm looking at the wrong staff report, sorry, and then also to include where we were at with that plan review and the corrections that had gone out, and so that whomever is gonna volunteer for this ad hoc kinda has the whole story and the whole background to study up and be prepared. So at that, with that said, I'm gonna leave it to you guys to appoint who you would like to serve on that ad hoc.
Who wants to be first for question, Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, my question here is, for this ad hoc committee, what the purpose of it is, I was involved back in the day when the theater was donated for a dollar, and they had to pay the back taxes and everything, so is the, is the city being asked for any financial contribution through this, or is this so that the theater would be eligible for any grant funding or something like this? Because it says no fiscal, there's nothing fiscally gonna cost the city, but it's kind of a little bit, the question marks there, because it could, the way it's written, okay? So is there a cost, is the city donating its staff time, and what's the purpose of this?
So I'll start with my perceived idea of what the purpose is. In, in general, an ad hoc committee is an advisory committee of two council members, you've served on a few different ones, so you know how they, how they work, and then they would develop ideas for, you know, whatever the general purpose is. So that's something that you, as you formulate this ad hoc, you would set the guidelines of what you expect this ad hoc to achieve, and then report, the purpose is then that ad hoc would report to the entire council. The question about seeking grant funding, the theater is ineligible for community development block grant funding, that is described in the history here, they went down that path, it was deemed ineligible, they had to pay back the money, not them, us, the city, we had to pay it out of general fund, back to HUD. So I would strongly recommend we do not allocate CDBG fund dollars, because we will be going down the exact same path again. I think, and I'll just speak bluntly, I believe the reason to formulate the ad hoc, I think the reason Councilmember Bridge brought this up is because the applicant is at a standstill, they are not either willing, understanding, development is a complex process, and there are a lot of elements that go into it, and so they've reached this point where they want to do something, and the code is not allowing them to do it. So I believe that the reason and the request to formulate the ad hoc was to get two members of council in the room with the design team and the city's development staff, I don't wanna use the word pressure, but I think for, to have another set of eyes there to understand, and maybe the thought is that the ad hoc members of the council would be able to guide either staff or the design team that represents the theater project group to, to reach a resolution in what the needs are in order to move the project forward. And I think- forward. And I think overall, it's to get this thing done that we have been trying to get done forever.
Well, you know, I'm all for the theater as far as a separate entity, but I remember with LH CDC and all the entities that came around that actually lost money on this theater and actually the Calverts that used to own it. It's, it's really a separate entity, so I'm just having a hard time grasping what exactly, and I get it, if you're a board member, you want the city to be a partner to sell the idea, but they got it for a dollar, they had to pay the back taxes, and I understand if there's a discount on staff time or to fast track it. But my concern is that there's going to be a cost involved that we're going to end up donating, and it's kind of a backtrack when you get something for a dollar and then you have to, you, you come around the back door and you ask for funding.
Can I comment?
Well, I'm not done yet, okay?
Hold on.
So basically, I'd like a clear explanation because I don't like people coming in regardless of the thought process without being forthright exactly what the outcome's going to be. And it says here that the outcome of the, and I didn't mean to be rude, sorry, what the idea is, it said the purpose of the ad hoc, when the ad hoc is completed, but what's the completion? It's going to be the theater get totally remodeled or done? Because normally an ad hoc isn't perpetual.
Let me, let me go to Councilmember Bridge, because I think he's the one that made the motion for this, and he might have.
I, I did. And the theater was not the genesis of this. I am the genesis of this. And I've met with both staff and the theater, the project office, and I believe what's happening mainly is they're talking past each other. They all have good intents. It's a big project. We're committed as a community. They just got $4 million, so it's not like they're lacking the funds to get the job done. They're struggling a little bit with it being a historic building and maintaining the character. And I know that people who've been working on the theater project, emotions can run high, and so sometimes communications breaks down. So I would like to have us involve ourselves as part of the general plan. Our general plan says that we're going to expedite permit processing, we're going to get community engagement, we're going to use creative ways to make our downtown a viable, vibrant community, and, and I'm willing to give it a shot, and perhaps one other councilman, to see if we can get these guys back moving forward. I know the staff's committed to that, and I know the, the theater project's committed to that. If we can get them all in a room, and perhaps add some guidance, perhaps we can move this and get it done by their 100th anniversary. That, that's the goal. But the theater folks did not suggest this, I suggested this, after talking to all sides, and there's no shots to either side here. It's just, let's get in a room and find out what we got to do that's legal, meets code, and gets the project going. So that's the genesis. So I don't.
Thank you. Sorry. Didn't mean to be rude.
No, that's all right. So I'd like to make a motion that we.
We got public comment. Councilmember Ball has something to say.
I thought you made the motion before you had a public comment.
So, again, I appreciate Councilmember Vega's questions on this. I think, from what I understood, and the reason I'm actually interested in participating, if council allows, is I have no interest in the city giving more money to the theater, nothing, nothing like that. I just want it to open. Moved here in 2012, we started donating little funds, and there was a little bit of hope. It's 2025 now. Other theaters in the state of California, with CEQA, environmental this, and all of the challenges, have figured out a way to work with their city, their nonprofits, whoever's in charge, and thread a really impossible needle and get that theater open in their cities. When those cities have gotten their theaters open, what do you know? Nightlife starts to, to come in, outside investment comes in, and there starts to be more economic activity. So you have my personal commitment. I have no desire to see extra random, sketchy, fraudulent funds used in any city capacity for the theater. They've already got the lien taken care of, and now they've got some money in the bank. Their challenge is to go and raise additional funds. For me, I want to make sure that the city process doesn't accidentally get in the way when another place in California figured out how to do it legally. So I want to make sure that our city is doing everything it can to not just try to get this open, but studying other municipalities that have had similar challenges, so they can get their theater open. Because I honestly feel, if we don't have a heartbeat in downtown, we're just going to be here again in 10 years hoping and wishing for something. We need to stay committed to something to get it open. I'd love to participate and make sure that the city doesn't get in the way of this.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, Councilmember Ball, I respect both of you, and I, sorry, I get intense here. So guess what? I didn't mean to sound so terse, like I'm scolding a kid, because that's not the way I work, okay? But the idea is, I was actually involved with the original process, so I still hang on to the way the theater was obtained. I do want the theater to open, but I'm concerned if this is a path to grease the skids, to get through the planning and processing part. But, you know, we're always tasked with staff time for everything, every developer that comes to town here. Now, if they're going to donate their time to whatever it is, or it's going to be through the ad hoc or through who you know, I just want to know. Does that make sense? Because what happens is, most of the time, staff recommends, staff recommends, and staff recommends, or provide other direction. And I want to make sure that we're making good fiscal decisions that are transparent. That's all.
Councilmember Ball.
I certainly don't disagree with that. I just, I think this is an opportunity, again, for our city to know that they're taking ultimately guidance from council. It is up to council to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible. So if we, as a council, can give clear guidance to staff about how we want this to work, I think that's totally fair to make sure that we're staying clean and no gray areas. So I agree with you.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I speak?
Councilmember Vega, yes.
You know, and what happens here, like Christie, how do you perceive staff handling this? Is the ad hoc, is it because we have Councilmember Bridge that can go back to planning and speak with you on his own time? Is that part of the factor? Or how does this work exactly? Okay, where it greases the skids. I just want to know, okay? How are you guys planning it? Is there a cost to this at all? I know right now it says no. That's all they want.
So, so to your first question, how will staff handle council members, you know, in, in discussion when we are being the regulatory and compliance agent and explaining what needs to occur and what needs to be done? We know, and we hope our council members know, that it is completely inappropriate for them to pressure staff to change anything that is a code requirement, or that they are requiring per any of our codes, whether it's zoning, building, or fire codes. With that said, I would be remiss if I did not say to you that it, I, I do have reservations about it. There, it can be uncomfortable for staff. We are motivated to move these projects forward. That is my job. That is what I do, and I do it all the time. But people do have to follow our processes. The next piece of the question that you asked was cost. Of course, there is a cost involved. The first cost is the plan check fee, and unfortunately for the theater group, I believe they are on third, fourth, fifth plan check. They will now be billed per hour for plan check. So the more time, more people in the room, they're, they're going to have to pay for it. Usually, we get through them on three plan checks. And then aside from that, there's the opportunity cost. So I'm pulling my people together, and it's not just my people, it is also my time. It's going to be Mike Luther, Craig Dearling, Lori Spears, consultants that we pay an hourly rate to. Those are all costs, actual financial costs, but then in addition to them, there are opportunity costs where we should be working on other things. I don't think we all need to be in the room to get this thing done. I think we're motivated to get it done, and if we were given the opportunity to do it on our own, I think we could do it. But Councilmember Bridge approached me about this situation, and I said, hey, I'm happy to share with you. If the theater group is happy to let me share with you, I'm happy to include you in what we got going on. And then the ad hoc request came about, so that kind of took a back burner, and I waited for this to happen. So we're here today.
And thank you. I don't want to sound negative on just asking the hard questions because if we don't, we're going to go back, just like everybody else. Utility rates went up, and everybody waits till afterwards to ask about their rates, you know, when the participation in the public hearing was here. I think one of the biggest questions that I had was, and it was answered already, is I'm all for, you know, opening communication if it helps. My thing was, I thought maybe there would be grant opportunities, which apparently they're not eligible for by cooperating with the city. So it probably puts you in a hard spot. But that, thank you for the answers.
Let me go ahead and open up the public comment. So, anybody want to line up? We got, we got one on the phone. Let me grab the one on the phone first. Did you do it? Did you hang up on him? All right, go ahead. You got three minutes. Ready?
Karen Hamilton. I served on the board of the Lumpok Theater Project for six years, and I think this is a great step forward, that you do have an ad hoc committee and you work closely with them because they did secure that incredible funding, and that's a great start for this project, working together with them. If, I see that as the only thing that can get in the way of the development of the theater. And it's going to make a jewel for downtown. So I think, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we can get another diamond downtown. Are you ready? Did you figure out the phone? No? We're no-go? All right, I guess we can close it in case. We good? City Attorney says I can close it. Okay. Closing public comment, not that item. All right, back to you guys. Deliberations. What do you think? What do you want to do? You done deliberating?
I want to make a motion. We establish the Old Town Revitalization Ad hoc Committee, or the Theater Ad hoc Committee, whatever you want to call it, and we explore ways to get the permit through and see how we can get the community engaged, if that helps. And I do know that there are grant opportunities for the theater, but not necessarily CDBG grant funds. So I'd like to see the ad hoc committee.
Do you need clarification on the committee? City Attorney?
I just want to make sure that the task of the committee is specific, because if we don't have a specific task and it is an ongoing committee, then we have to comply with, we have to post agendas, and we have to have all that Brown Act compliance.
We will have the, have the termination of this, the completion of the permit.
Okay, that's good.
We good?
I did.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. My button was pressed.
And we've got Bridge with a first and Ball with a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
I'm sorry, before you vote, are, you're just establishing it. Are you also going to volunteer to be on it, or address somebody to be on it right now at the same time?
We're going to establish, and then we'll go ahead and put people on after we've established.
You don't want to do it all in one shot?
No.
Still have a question.
You got a question?
Again, Councilman Bridge, you said till the permit's done. Normally, ad hocks have some sort of expiration or length of time. You know what I mean? Is this an ad hoc, or is this a committee?
I'm going to have to have Jeff help me.
An ad hoc is normally, there's a purpose, yes, and the permit could be five years from now.
It could be five years, as long as there is some task that will end, then we're fine, and it's an ad hoc. So receipt of the permit is a task that does have an end date, and so it's an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Go ahead and vote. All right, we have Vega voted no, Bridge, Mosby, and Ball, yes, and Starbuck is absent. All right. So now that we've got something, who wants to be on it?
I'll be happy to be on it.
Send my district. I'd love to see it.
Bridge and Ball.
Bridge and Ball.
Who's your motion?
I'll make a motion that Bridge and Ball are in the ad hoc committee.
All right. I'll give you a second. Oh, you want a second that way in? Okay, whatever you want to play it out.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead and vote. We have four yeses with Starbuck absent. Welcome. You guys got an ad hoc.
Thank you.
All right. The Councilmember Starbuck back here. Item number four. City to discuss, take possible action to remove Juan Harada from Public Safety Commission. Is this straight to us, City Attorney? Okay. Councilmember Vega, I believe this was your appointment to the Public Safety Commission?
Yes, I have a person that's involved with Public Safety Commission, and we're going to do a change out. So I'd like to remove the current committee member, commission member.
Do we need public comment?
You don't need public comment for this, just a vote.
Okay.
Or second and a vote.
Is that your motion? You want a second on his motion to remove? We got a second?
Councilmember Vega, you have to press the motion.
You got to push your motion, Vega, Councilmember Vega, that you made that motion, right? Okay, motion by Councilmember Vega, second by Ball. By Ball? You beat Bridge?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, you do. All right, go ahead and vote. There's your 5-0. All right. That was a quick one. Let's go. What we got next? Public hearing, item number five. Who we got on that? Mr. Stone's coming down? Acting Planning Manager?
Prior to him making the presentation, can I ask a quick question on the?
Yes.
We're going to go through this whole briefing, and we're going to approve it or not approve it. And let's make the assumption for a moment, we do approve it. Can we delay the actual implementation for the committee meeting that's occurring on the 14th or the 18th, where they're also discussing general plan? And I'm assuming something will come out of that meeting, so that we can only do one general plan approval? Or, does that question make sense?
Yes, you're referring to the, the limit of four times that we can amend the general plan in a year. So.
We're fine. It's in a calendar year.
Oh, it's in a. Ms. Alakon and I had discussed whether it was a 12-month period or whether it is a calendar year, and it's actually a calendar year. So since we're in January right now, we're, we're, we got a lot of slots. We have four for 2025.
Well, we will be using two of the four and I was told it's common practice to try to reserve at least one for emergency general plan changes.
You can.
So if we combine the two, that would be one.
That's correct. And you, and you can do that. And if you wanted to not adopt the general plan amendments tonight, actually, the general plan and the zoning amendments tonight would need to be adopted at the same time, but we can delay it until after the committee meeting if you would like to.
Okay, let's.
I just want to be practical.
Yeah, let's start with our presentation here. We know, we've had the, I don't think you'd have to go down all that deep, but you know what you got to do. Drive away.
Good evening, Mayor Mosby and members of the council. So tonight we have the general plan and zoning code amendments for the implementation of housing element programs associated with the six-cycle general plan housing element update. This is GP 2024-0003 and TA 2024-0003. So the purpose of these amendments is to implement our general plan housing element that recently was adopted and certified. And within the housing element, there are these implementation programs that we're want to meet. And some of the changes within this are because, essentially to meet arena numbers and to facilitate achieving maximum densities. This is essentially phase one. At a later point in the year, we'll have more updates, but this is the first batch, So I'll go over some of the general plan changes. In the high-density residential zone, increase density from 22 to 33 units per acre. In the Old Town Commercial, increase allowed residential floor area from 50% to 75%. Mixed use, increase floor area ratio from 1 to 1.5 and increase allowable residential from 25 through 50 to 75%. Some of the zoning changes include, in the OTC and MU zone, increase allowable height from 45 to 50, essentially four stories, and the floor area ratio. In the R2 zone, increase lot coverage from 50 to 60%. In the R3 zone, increase the lot coverage from 60 to 70 and height from 30 to 40. So that, that 45 is incorrect. I should have said 40. So 35 to 40 feet in height, three stories. Other changes include permit streamlining to include residential care facilities and large family daycares and single-room occupancies to essentially allow them, essentially just allow them as opposed to requiring a conditional use permit. And in the mixed-use zone, it's to eliminate single-family residential and that's to essentially facilitate and, and encourage multifamily dwellings instead of single-family dwellings. Update the definitions for emergency shelters and also allow emergency shelters as a permitted use in the MU zone as opposed to requiring it as a conditional use permit. More flexible parking requirements in the emergency shelter section of residential care homes and revision to pedestrian access as it pertains to the H Street overlay. Currently, our zoning code has extra provisions that are essentially unnecessary as the building permit essentially already covers it and so it's redundant. We want that removed from the zoning code. The addendum to the general plan and final EIR was completed and determined that the proposed amendments would not create newer, more severe environmental impacts. So staff's recommendation is to approve the general plan and zoning code amendments in accordance with the resolution's ordinances in order to meet our housing element or provide other directions. And then if Jeff, if you had anything else to add, otherwise I'm done. Thank you.
I don't have anything to add at this time. I'll, if I need to, after public comment.
Okay, we'll open this up then. Any questions? We'll go to public comment before we bring you back to deliberations. Public comment. Come on. Yes, you may. Yes, to the podium.
Thank you.
To the torture chamber.
I hope that.
Ah, be good.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blake Bradley. I'm a local community member here in Lumpoke, work on base. And for those of you that I've met before, I'm a shameless Lumpoke promoter. So excited to be here with you all tonight. I mostly just wanted to come and share my support for the proposed amendments, specifically as it relates to ordinance 1719, which Councilmember Ball, as you mentioned earlier, the Old Town Commercial area in the downtown is really critical to the growth of Lumpoke. And I was able to move this area about four years ago and have been excited to see the growth in the city and I'm excited to continue to see that growth. And I think that the ordinance as it's presented in the various parts of item five tonight really do unlock a lot of opportunity for further economic growth and development and investment in our downtown, which we know we desperately need. So on top of that, one of the interesting things I think that's noted in 1719 is the opportunity to go taller with the buildings. And I think that the opportunity to go taller is unique and important in this area and I'll tell you why. I think that it's no secret that we have a really great national asset right next to us here with Vandenberg Space Force Base. Things go high in the sky quite often there from the base and whether we like it or not, it's quite a spectacle. So I think being able to go higher and, and build out facilities that are more dense not only encourage economic development, but also encourage a little bit of fun because you can build opportunities that are taller to be able to see both the beautiful nature that surrounds us and then also the activities of the base. So I think that's all really important. The other thing I would like to say is that building costs are high. I know many of the members of the council and many members of the community are involved with owning land or real property in the area and you know this stuff's expensive. The land is expensive, the building costs are expensive. So if we have investors who are willing to come to this area, purchase land, invest in that land and make our downtown better, I think we should, as a city, we have the responsibility to support them in that the best way we can. And increased density allows you to spread your costs over that, that fixed cost that you're already spending on the land and the building cost. So I would just like to encourage the council to vote on this and hopefully support the continued economic growth and development opportunities for investment dollars coming into Lumpoke and specifically into our downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Right. We'll close public comment. So one of my questions I had was, why were you doing this? I keep watching the creep going up, up, up in altitude. Talked with the fire chief on how we could protect a 50-foot building, which we don't have the ladder truck for yet. We're looking. And other variables that happened, but as we watched this go from a 35-foot to 45-foot and now we're looking at 50-foot. So asking why we were mandated or what was the discussion for this, Mr. Stone's, there he is. He was able to come up with, the HCD said, you need it because you haven't, you don't have any more land to look at. But I had brought up a land about two years ago to look at and it wasn't looked at for whatever reasons brought on, but I think that there's an opportunity that we look at a piece of land that's on Ocean Avenue, that's a couple acres that at one time I was told had a residential zoning on it. And for some reason, we were looking at the Elks Lodge parking lot, but we didn't look at this land. We looked, we looked at a lot of other lands, as you're well aware of, but why was this parcel left out on Ocean Avenue on Fifth Street? There's two acres there. It's got high-density residential behind it. But that in itself potentially would trigger that we wouldn't have to go up as high. I know you're wanting to go high, but there are a lot of complications. We would actually violate, I believe in many cases, our general plan that says you need to be building, paraphrasing, a house next to another house that is kind of like in nature. So if you're going to put a four-story 50-foot next to somebody's 1960 house, I think that would conflict with the neighborhood. I don't think a lot of people would like a four-story 50-foot building next to it. So I believe that not all the research has been done here. I think we should investigate this parcel. Would it help to meet our arena numbers that, that are out there? And we don't necessarily have to trigger these elevations and end up with significant litigation and such by going and elevating this high. So we do have some time. Like this, the City Attorney, we, we are under the gun, so they could come back with this evaluation and maybe we look at going three-story 35 feet because the creep has happened. You start three, three-story 35, then it's three-story 40, and then it's four-story 40, four-story 45, and we know what's going on. If it's four-story 50, we know they'd actually mean it's going to be five-story 50. So I think we should reevaluate our town adding these two. So if people had other discussion, they wanted to go through the process of everything here, but I, I do believe that we did evaluate everything. And for whatever the reason, there was a significant piece of property that was, there was three parcels there. They were left out of, of the arena evaluation. I don't know why. Nobody was able to answer me that way, so. What we got here? Councilmember, would you first? Bridge?
So I think Jim's, or Mayor Mosby's comments are excellent. I do believe we met the arena numbers. I, I, I'm not going to pretend to be knowledgeable on this, but I don't believe the four-story, five-story, you know, wherever we ended up, 50 feet was driven by lack of meeting the arena numbers. I think it was driven by the state. So I think the legitimate question would be to ask, in this general plan amendment that we're being asked to review, which elements were demanded or required or whatever the right technical term is by the state versus which ones did we put in to try to meet the intent? And I don't know if we know that answer, but maybe you do.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know off the top of my head. I would have to look into that. It's just that, one of the reasons why we're doing this is, well, it's because it's in our new housing element. Now, why did it get put in the housing element? I would have to look into that more. My understanding is from between the conversations between the previous planning manager and, and the HCD, that's, some of the items were essentially were asked for in order to, again, achieve maximum densities to.
Well, I think this is at the core of the question because what Mayor Mosby is suggesting, which I could support.
Chief Chappelle, your microphone.
I'm sorry. What Mayor Mosby is suggesting, which I could possibly support, is to modify this to a lower level. And I just, I think we need to know whether we have that latitude or not. And I know when this was in the Planning Commission, there were multiple things we were told, you don't have the latitude. This is the law and the requirement and if you don't pass this, then you're not going to meet the general plan housing and then that opens us up that we don't get grants and on and on and on, right? So that's at the core of this question. I don't disagree with you at a moment, but we need to have that answer or we're just spinning.
Greg, I think I can answer Councilmember Bridge's question. To speak to your question as to whether or not the increase in density, increase in height went into the arena count, of course it did. Everything goes into it. It may not have been on the underutilized sites or the vacant lot inventory, you remember that big list, but those were all methods or programs that they want, the state encouraged us to adopt in order to have a compliant housing element. We now have a compliant housing element. Now we are on a schedule to adopt all of the programs that we promised them we would adopt. This piece of the, this one is like the place-based strategies. So this piece on the increased height for MU and OTC is.
And R3.
I'm sorry?
And R3 zone.
And R3 is required for, and, and our deadline is 2025, my understanding. So we can have, we can delay that decision on that piece and have further discussion and as Mayor Mosby asks, we can go back to HCD and we can ask them, you know, a prior council approved this, there are concerns, would, would you consider a reduction in that height limit if we identified other sites to help us make our arena number? Because that change is going to change the count. So now we're going to have to find other places. And I think Mayor Mosby was referring to another site that doesn't quite get us there, but we could look at other methods in order to do that. But all of that means going back and consulting with HCD. And we would have to act quickly and try to get that done, you know, before the end of 2025. And we could very well go through that entire exercise and have HCD tell us no. But at least if this is a great concern of this community and it doesn't fit the vision of the community, then we will have gone through that exercise and we will have tried and we will have gotten our answer. So that's an op, it is an option, but it's.
Yeah. HCD could also say very well it does work too, so just, there are two sides of that coin, so.
Maybe.
But I think you have a property that was, was missed, significantly missed. I definitely think it's more viable of a property than the Elks Lodge parking lot. We, we know that's not going to be built on the next five years. We know that was a ridiculous option. But you put that together, you did put one that definitely does. But I think we, we owe it to the people to at least investigate the items that are out there. And I, I think that it's worth at least seeing these numbers. We have a timeframe until the rest of this year and I think it's worth investigating. But Councilmember Ball, you had a question?
Maybe a question, a couple of quick comments. And again, I appreciate hearing me out on this. I maybe present a slightly different perspective than some and I just want to, I am still a renter. I don't make a lot of money. I want us to be very thoughtful that, look, it doesn't have to be one way or the other. There could be a middle zone. And let me, let me be a little bit more clear about this. When we think about building up a little bit, it doesn't necessarily all have to be low-income housing. Could be a denser, younger population that wants to plug in and start maybe an ownership conversation at a much lower level than a half a million dollars for a piece of junk in Lumpoke. So again, I appreciate the, some of the terms that are used, you know, the look and feel and how does Lumpoke want to turn out? But you can drive through town and you can see a random building next to a really beautiful old home. We have made adjustments and sometimes we haven't necessarily gone it right. Just for perspective, and again, I'm not necessarily disagreeing, but one might consider that if a ladder truck at the fire department costs me a million dollars, but I could provide safety and security to any building in this city that had three or four stories, then that cost might benefit this city in that we've been a little bit more flexible in the way that we imagine our future. So again, if we want to see a future in Lumpoke where young people want to stay here and get invested, they're getting pushed out constantly because there's not options. We don't have dense options for people that have decent incomes. We don't have ownership opportunities. So guess what's tempting? A place that has ownership opportunities is of a certain amount. So I'm just, again, I'm not disagreeing with anyone here. I just want the city to hear that there is some perspective and there is some upward mobility issues that challenge people that are working really hard in this community to find a place to plug in and own something. So if we're only left to keep every single thing the same way that we've always done it, we're probably going to have the same results. So at least from my perspective, I encourage us to think towards the future. Let's build up and let's make sure we can protect the people that live there. The ladder truck should not be something that's crazy. That should be a plan. We used to actually have one. So we could provide safety and security to tall buildings. So again, the city maybe talk about it. Are you scared of tall buildings? Or are you scared of having a place that you could actually live that's affordable? There are trade-offs to consider. Two cents.
Up is usually more money. It costs, it does cost more to go up. It doesn't necessarily get cheaper by the level.
We could definitely encourage a process that streamlined as much as possible. We could definitely encourage a process that streamlined as much as possible here.
Yeah, without a doubt.
But I will tell you that no one is paying a half a million dollars for a decent condo. They're paying three to four hundred grand.
I hear you.
So there is different price points.
So anyhow, what I'd like to, oh, Councilmember Vega, I'm sorry about that.
No, 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 just a comment. You know, I, I don't see any negative to looking for other sites that we could throw in there. And, and also the possibility of adding ADUs to meet our Rena number is a clear possibility since we're moving forward like that. But I'm not sure exactly how they are, they're identified here. They're definitely a housing unit, okay? So basically, the math is there, okay? We just have to utilize and take a look at it.
Yeah. Well, if, the ADUs are there, but if I, if I could just make the motion that you bring this back with, with a study showing those three parcels that are on Ocean Avenue and reverting back to the three-story thirty-five to see if it, it could come together. Did you underst-
To, to reach out to HCD and see if we-
Correct.
-we could get a, some type of arrangement or amendment to the housing element to change the way that we're complying to-
Correct.
...meet that.
Can I ask one quick question, Mayor?
Yes.
Can this be done in parallel, you know, assuming that there's the chance they may say, yes, we're open to some adjustment, or they're an absolute no, can this be done in parallel, not jeopardizing our timeline or risking us passing what?
Well, yeah, it has to be done in time, yes.
So we can do both.
Without, without a doubt, yes. Time constraints.
We will be sensitive to that.
Expeditiously, yes. We're not going to wait nine months, no. We're already two years behind on this already. Well, yeah.
One other quick question. I had a couple of like little texts, there's a couple typos and a few things. If this is coming back, we don't need to address it.
Yeah, yeah, you get the typos later.
Thank you.
Do that at any time. If I could get a-
I'll give you a second.
I have a second question.
Oh, Councilmember Bridge.
So, um, since you're trying to reevaluate in the sense of increasing the numbers, I don't believe we use the land in front of the CHC on Western Ocean. So if they're doing those-
Oh, and that one as well?
Might as well.
Okay, yes, might as well. Might as well. I know it was a commercial component, but it was residential at one time. We converted it because we were told to convert it.
So Mayor, you'll amend your motion to include that parcel as well?
Amend my motion to include that parcel. So I get a second?
Another second?
You give me a second already?
I can't do a second.
Sorry. Wait, I got to do my first motion, sorry.
I'll give you a second.
There's my first. And Bridge, give me a second. All right.
Oh, man.
Any more clarification? Go ahead and let's vote. And that's passed as five zero. I don't know if you got a copy of this letter, but they should have given it to you. All right, progressing on. I know, I know, I know. That was, that much we actually could have been two hours on, so we're, we're cruising Let's see.
Do you have my presentation? You know, okay.
So now we're going to go to a council request, item number six, review and approval of proposed amendments to the sub-recipient financial programmatic and monitoring reporting requirement policy. Who wanted this one? Is that you, Councilmember Starbuck? Yes, it is. It's like Christmas here. All right. Thank you, Matt. Come on down.
Good evening. As previously mentioned, back in May of 2024, Councilmember Starbuck had requested that staff review chapter forty-five, the sub-recipient financial programmatic and monitoring reporting requirement policy, and take a look at some of the wording and see if we couldn't condense it down a little bit to make it make a little more sense and clarify some of the confusion and ambiguity within it. To go along with that, staff did a thorough, in-depth look at this, and some of our recommendations that I will cut, are cut to in just a moment, are born out of the idea that when we read through this, many mentions are made in here that it relates to housing and the background behind it, when it was created, was due to the 2012 Santa Barbara County Civil Grand Jury report regarding LHCDC. So many mentions within this report are understood to be related to housing of low-income and homeless residents within the city. So staff has made the recommendation of just a few small ones on here, under the sub-recipient definition, removing the section on there that mentions nonprofit agencies and reword it to state, for the purposes of the policy, a sub-recipient is defined as an affordable housing organization organized primarily to provide for lower-income residential, transitional, and homeless residents that receive funding through the city by way of grants or loans. Further on, that mentions that any of those organizations that provide that of over fifty thousand dollars through the city would then be pursuant or, what's the word I'm looking for? Would be upheld to this requirement. The only other suggestions that were made throughout were to change the economic, economic and community development department. Since that no longer exists in name, it's just changing it to community development department. Those are the only changes that were made within this to clarify that, hopefully. And at this point, I'm open to council questions and comments about how we would like to proceed with this.
Councilmember Starbuck, I'm sure you've got, you're up.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, everything he said, and. There, there's a couple of things. I've sat on contract complacency for a, a couple of years and a, a couple of things have come up. We've done the contract complacency based upon the grand jury's recommendation of failure of oversight. So this, chapter forty-five was originally written as an overview of housing, low-income housing and funding that the city receives. That was the key thing, was the unaccountability of funds that were coming through the city. Well, the contract, we started to get involved with some of these. Now, I'll give you some examples. One of them was the Chamber. One of them was the Lompoc Museum. Yeah, there was a couple, I've got them jotted here. But what, how far down into a wormhole does the council really want to go? This is why part of the request to come back. Our housing, we receive a report annually already. I'm not sure of the month, two, yes. And without us having our own housing, LHCDC, so to speak, it's a fairly standard, easy report to understand now. So we do receive that. We found ourselves in this meeting going, okay, the Chamber is on a three-year audit cycle, the Lompoc Museum, will we accept taxes, et cetera, et cetera. Well, we could probably not audit these organizations, is my suggestion. If you notice on the staff report, it was anything over fifty thousand that we donated. One of the things that causes a concern again here, and I talked with Mr. Adams the other day, is there's future, we have contracts out there. And one of them that's coming up very soon, Mr. Adams is going to give me this date, is we're going to inherit a bike skills park soon. None of us up here know when, but there is a contract. When is that going to be, Mr. Adams?
I would love to stand here and give you that date. I went looking for it and I have not been able to locate that contract yet. I know it exists, I just don't know which folder or in file in our, in our system. So I am still on the hunt for it. I'll get that for you as soon as I can find it.
Damn it, Matt, that was not the answer. So anyhow, now we're standing here with this. We, we have a contract with Lompoc Park and Pool Foundation, and we don't know when we're going to assume this. So what do we want to have in our council policy for this chapter forty-five? Is what I'm really kind of asking. We've sat here, there's been a group of people, there's been the accounting, management services, you know, and we sit here and we get the people that are involved, we talk direct with them, and it's, it's a very quick, easy meeting, but we're not really accomplishing anything. But I feel it's mandatory that we do have contract complacency because if anything goes wrong, guess who gets blamed? Yeah, we're, everybody's looking at us right now. So that's why it's sitting here in front of us.
If I may, the only addition I would make to that, to add to contract compliance, would be to narrow the scope of that, if to just, to what contracts you would like, because if we did contract compliance, we could then be interpreted to do all of our vendors for goods and services, and then we're talking hundreds upon hundreds of contracts, which would take up an inordinate amount of time to review.
You know, I'm really hoping nobody up here wants to get into the micromanagement mode, and I don't think anybody wants to be over here with the hundreds of contracts where we're going to hire two or three people and staff to go down and monitor-
Yeah.
-toilet paper and everything else that we buy here on a routine. So, exactly. I mean, what, what level of contract complacency does this council want to assume?
Well, my mic's on. Any more questions for staff? You want to stay there? Gage, you got some more? You got some more?
I just had a comment.
Councilmember Bridge.
And maybe a question. First off, when I read it, I mean, it was classic legalese. I, you know, I, I struggle to understand one paragraph of this damn thing, nevertheless the whole thing. I mean, I'd have to read it twelve times to, so that bothered me a little bit. And for fifty thousand dollars, I would walk away from a contract that had the kind of reporting that is required here for, I'd spend fifty thousand dollars on audits and stuff. So that bothered me.
Yeah, well, you know, like it says here, that was an amount that staff came up with, and you know, I was the council-
I'm not criticizing.
Yeah, I was the council rep, and I said, if that's what you think, that's what we'll do. And, well, staff and myself are saying, now, is it necessary?
Do you have a recommendation, would be my question?
I'd like to keep with housing and then I'd like staff to go ahead and continue to run the contracts without us. I mean, that, that would be the easiest thing, is we just receive, we could almost do away with this and just receive our standard housing report and not even have the contract compliance. Because I don't think we're going to lose the oversight. Does that make sense? At this point-
Let me get a public comment before we deliberate too much more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let me see if there's any public comment for this. Anybody calling? No? Can't believe it. Contract complacency, really? All right, let's bring it back. Close public comment, bring it back to council, Councilmember Bridge.
So when you make a statement like, I don't think we need to have concrete, contract compliance, I kind of think back to the last grand jury, and that was one of the findings. So I, I don't disagree with you in philosophy, but I'm not sure we can get away with no contract compliance. Maybe you up the threshold significantly. So if it's two hundred and fifty or four hundred or five hundred K or something, anything below that is, you leave it to staff.
I don't think we have any. Any big, I mean, we don't have any contracts that are of that value, so to speak. I mean, other than a short-term, something that's getting built or a service that's provided.
Do you have an answer?
He actually just, Councilmember Starbuck just touched on it, that, yeah, the only ones that I'm aware of that are for over two hundred and fifty thousand would be our normal contracts for, you know, security purpose, like our security system, the, you know, the audio system in here, things like that, our normal vendors. I don't know of any off the top of my head that are for two hundred and fifty thousand that are related to anything that would fall under forty-five. As far as the contracts go, I, yeah, I haven't found a lot of the older ones, I'm still looking for them.
How, how big is Explorer Lompoc?
In terms of our contract?
Yeah.
It varies one year to year based on how much is received in TOT and T-Bid. Oh, T-Bid, more or less, but.
So just so real quick, Explorer Lompoc is a different, it, it, it isn't a past, it's not the city money at all. The city is just using, it's just coming in, and it, the city is administrator of that. It's not actually going through our books as revenue.
Don't we have a level of oversight? Don't we have to annually review that? We have annual compliance? What do we, what is, do we do?
We have the annual report that, that Visit Lompoc needs to present each year. And, and so that, that is a separate, it, it doesn't fall under this chapter forty-five-
Okay.
...regulation.
Councilmember Ball.
Just a couple of questions, and I, I'm kind of just learning a little bit more about this. I, I think for me, I, I kind of, I hear where you come from, Mr. Starbuck, and I, I think I agree with that. I guess in general, there, just because it's been thrown out there, and again, this is in a vacuum, if there's a number of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for some staff, potentially, and I, I guess where I'm coming from is, it, in, in what world does that make sense for us to ever go for, maybe I should rephrase that, considering we do not have that staff right now for this compliance? Have we missed something in the last four or five years that's been detrimental to the cities, its finances, its, anything like that? Does that make sense?
I, I would, I don't see that we have missed anything at this, at this point. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question. If you could repeat that.
If council had wanted to, we could say, we want to up compliance, and here's an option staff's presented, that, again, in a vacuum, could have been some additional staff coming at it a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, right? To add additional compliance because we feel like we're not being compliant enough. If we bought into the idea that we haven't been compliant enough, I'm wondering what we might have been risking in the last five years by not having that extra compliance?
Nothing material that I am aware of.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to get to is, I'm in full favor of streamlining the system so it gets rid of the confusion.
Uh huh.
Because it's very confusing as to what, do we, are we out of compliance? Do we need more? Or is it actually just a streamlining and a cleaning up of the system and making it more current? That's where I'm kind of foggy.
To clarify that, not, not a problem. To clarify that, the, the staff port, the, the additional staff portion of that staff report was only if we were to include full compliance on every single one of our contracts because of how many we have. One staff member couldn't handle that, it would have to be split up over a couple, as well as including if we wanted to do every dollar given to nonprofits. So if we wanted to expand the scope completely to include all nonprofits, not just housing, not just, you know, housing-related, but all of that and all contracts, because that was the initial, the initial understanding of what was being requested, it turns out that's not exactly what was, was correct.
That makes-
That was our thought, so that's what we were looking at with the extra staff.
So that makes perfect sense, and I'm definitely not in favor of us trying to audit every single contract that we have that doesn't make any sort of logistical sense, and it sounds really expensive.
Okay, good. Anybody else? Councilmember Starbuck, did you have a motion on this one?
I'm not sure what the motion at this point. Everything's too easy. It's just, I, I'd like to make it just where we're going to monitor housing currently. I think staff can handle the three, I'm going to call them the odd literacy chamber and museum, and the rest of it's what you do in your normal work. So I mean, is it too hard to, to make this, just chapter forty-five is where we're going to make it official monitoring of the housing? Is that worth doing? Or should we just eliminate chapter forty-five?
The city attorney, did you have some?
Because this chapter forty-five was created in response to a grand jury report, and we told the grand jury that this is what we were going to do in response to their concerns, I don't think that we should eliminate the chapter tonight at this agenda item without looking into how we would need to communicate that to the grand jury, or whether we need to communicate that to the grand jury. But we can make the definition clearer and then we make it clear what contracts the policy applies to. So staff recommendation is to clarify that it only applies to housing organizations. And if you wanted to add a few more onto that, that would be fine, too.
No, I mean, I, so we would, could probably do away with the actual committee because we're going to receive a biannual report on the housing anyhow. So that would be our oversight, and we could include that in municipal code forty-five here.
The council's going to receive the compliance report every year.
Right, as a whole.
So there is still oversight.
It would be the oversight, so we, yeah.
I think that would be acceptable.
That's what my motion would be, if you could word that for me, Jeff. So Stacy can understand, she doesn't understand me.
As I understand it, the, the motion would be staff's recommendation, and in addition to that, amend the policy to eliminate the compliance committee and just have an appropriate member or department of staff present the compliance report to city council each year.
Yeah, we do actually receive, I think Ms. Alakon said, twice.
Twice each year.
And if we could put those dates in this section, then, yeah.
You want dates for those reports to-
Per month.
Okay.
Aren't those the same ones that Ms. Avaya presents to- Aren't those the same ones that Ms. Avaya presents to council, what, in July?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
And you want it reported at a open council meeting?
Yes.
Not just a memo?
No, that would be, she does a report.
Okay.
And that would meet our reporting requirements, and it would stop having.
I just want to make sure I have the right wording. Thank you.
I know how we are.
And what we would do, because we don't have the exact language yet, is we'll take that motion, and we'll change the policy and bring it back and probably put it on a consent calendar.
And I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. I'm just trying to make it roll here. So, that's.
Councilmember Vega, you had a question?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. I think zero accountability is probably not the wisest thing to do. I think probably what we do is, anybody, just a suggestion, anything over $50,000, these most nonprofits, if they get that, they have to file an IRS form, 990. And wouldn't it be easier, instead of saying, trust city to do the oversight without us being involved? And not that we can't trust them, we trust them. But the idea is to put that on there, but then allow the people to get the grants, to turn in their form to show that the funds were actually utilized.
Let me speak for staff real quick here, that there's only three. And they're on a three-year audit. Where housing is on an annual, so it was very difficult for Chamber, Museum, and the Literacy Council, which we finally have eliminated from this because they didn't receive enough money, to do this. So, there was a waiver factor of your taxes. They couldn't afford, it was ridiculous.
You're saying because they don't file taxes?
They file taxes, but they couldn't afford the formal audit annually.
Well, yeah, but I'm not talking about an audit. I'm saying.
Well, that's what this whole part was. So, we were receiving the tax, or the audit was done every three years. So, we would do the Museum and Chamber on a three-year cycle. And it, it was really a nothing to it, you know? It's the same with the Museum. Now, you know, staff would look at it. I didn't at this point. But we're talking really just two organizations.
Well, you know, I guess my suggestion was, it's not going to cost them any more money. It's just that they would have to turn in the form when they do their taxes to show that they use the money and they claimed, anything over $50,000.
Well, absolutely. I mean, then it would be a, then you would want to have the compliance meeting. Which, if we didn't have those three organizations, we wouldn't need the compliance meeting because we would all receive the report on the housing, which was the original intent to this.
Yeah, I got you. I'm just looking at a little bit of the easiest way to know that the money was used correctly, you know, or went, or that they claimed it, you know? 50 grand is 50 grand.
Yeah, it is. Well, I mean, you know, we got some that are receiving several hundred.
Because if they file taxes, they're going to have the form.
Yeah. Well, I mean, this is just.
All they have to do is turn it into the city, and we're good.
It was very hard on the receiving organizations, and it was very time consuming for the staff on just these little, two, two groups, so to speak, last year.
He never pushed his make motion.
He, he's on his first, but have you got something?
Yeah, I would, I would give him a second, but I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
So, I'd like to make an emote, a second, but make an amendment, which is, when you come back with it, let's find out if we can just eliminate it, if the grand jury is not an issue.
Accept amended?
You just got to say yes.
No, I don't hear a good repeat that.
Will you accept the amendment that it, if it can, that chapter can be removed, it would be removed?
Well, I didn't say that. He's going to come back and present it to us.
Oh, absolutely. Bring him back. Let's look at it. I mean, we got to.
Just paraphrasing.
Yeah.
We good? So, we have a first by Starbuck, and a second by Bridge. Just go ahead and vote. We're good. Keep going? Chugging? All right.
We're running late tonight.
Come in at 1:50 time, dude.
I know. Should be nice to get some dinner in there or something, huh? All right, number seven. Under council request, consideration of requests from Lomp, local nonprofit organization Future for Lompoc Youth for donation of $50,000 to purchase van for youth program, as well as consideration of requests from a local nonprofit organization for $575 for Apostolic Church to use for their TUP for the 2024 Safe and Same Fireworks Sales, and consideration of establishing a policy for evaluating nonprofit funding requests. Kristi, dummy.
I think I'm going to do this right from here. I've got a microphone. It works.
As long as they got you on camera, we're good to go.
So, staff recommends that council review and discuss requests from Future for Lompoc Youth nonprofit for $50,000 donation to purchase a van for their youth program, and First Apostolic Church for a waiver of 575 TUP fee for the 2024 Safe and Same Fireworks Sales. And so, this is pretty much outlined in the, in the staff report, that we have these requests come back in February of last year. Council had set aside $100,000, $25,000 to the city-sponsored mural society, which was donated as a contribution, and an additional $75,000 that was set aside in a restricted fund or restricted cash account to, that could be used to provide grants to local nonprofit organizations. There were no other parameters for applications or for selecting which organizations or amounts of donations to them was established that night or subsequent to the meeting. So, we had, on May 7th, Mr. Chuck Mastner of Future for Lompoc Youth had requested a $50,000 grant for the purpose of purchasing a van. And then, the following meeting, Mr. James Ball requested a waiver of fees for a temporary use permit to his church to allow for a trailer to be parked at the fireworks booth location that year. So, we, as staff, had expected to gather multiple requests from various nonprofits, and then considered them all together. And at this time, those were the only two requests that were received during, during calendar year 2024. Some of the concerns that staff has is that in providing ad hoc donations to nonprofits without an established framework for making contribution decisions has risks and challenges. And those are outlined in the second page of the staff report under the discussion. That we need to be careful about decisions of funding that could be, could appear to be subjective or inconsistent, or potentially leading to perceptions of favoritism. And we need to look at, or recommend, looking at accountability and oversight. How, how do we ensure that the fundings are used effectively and aligned with community property, community priorities, as well as what they have been requested for? So, staff is recommending that council consider developing a framework for evaluating nonprofit funding requests so that it's not just a first come, first served situation. The other highlight that we, that I wanted to make is on number five. In light of our, now, a year later fiscal situation, that we need to, just like it says here, evaluate the fiscal impact and include an assessment of our current financial position and reserve levels as part of the decision-making process. So, really, we just want to open this up for a discussion, and in, consider the, the requests of these two nonprofits, and whether we can establish some framework around the contributions, and how, and how we've set up a structure for that.
I have a question for you. What brought this about? The council, that they had extra money? I mean, what was the thought process?
So, we had, we had additional funding, we had, we were above our reserve policy limit. There had been a request, I believe, by the mural society for some funding through one of the council members. We brought that up, that we could consider funding for this request. And it was council's desire at that time to increase it to not just the, the one nonprofit, but to expand that to other nonprofit as a possibility. I think that it's a hard, it's a hard place to be in, because our hearts are wanting to help the nonprofits. But the question is, is, should we be using city funds to do that in contributing to nonprofits? And if we do, how do we determine which nonprofits and how much?
And what has changed since then? You said we had a surplus then, and we just?
Well, we, we anticipated a surplus this year, and we've gone over, we, in the presentation that I made earlier this evening, our, we are not at our, our reserve policy in our general fund anymore. Right now, the funding, the $75,000 is set aside and is part of the, what we talked about as the assigned fund balance. So, that is not, it is not going to decrease our reserve anymore. But if we were to change course, or if that was a consideration, in light of our current fiscal situation, we could release those funds back to the unassigned general fund.
Okay. Give Councilmember Ball, and then move down that way.
Yeah, just real quick. And I'm sorry, city attorney, I'll put this on you a little bit, but full transparency. So, my last name is Ball, and one of the items on here is a church that my dad pastors. True story. Fact is, I don't go to that church. It's totally different. I also don't get compensation from them. I don't get, it's just my parents. But I want to get it out there, so no one is saying, hey, you're, you're trying to change the rules for your folks, because that's not the case. So, if, if I need to step away from that discussion for any reason, like, I'm just being straight up about that. The other one, I've got lots of opinions and questions, but just wanted to put that out there.
As long as you are not dependent on your father, which I don't believe you are, then you do not have a conflict.
Thank you.
But I don't think they're just your parents.
They're great parents, but they're still just my parents.
I have a question. Councilmember Starbuck?
I'm going to tell your dad, but any, I have a question. Here's the council up here, and we're going to flail with this. What happened with this Lompoc Community Foundation? I thought that the council had set up a, a foundation that was going to take care of these type of things. It's got a council person on it. It's got members from commissions on it, some people from the public there. Isn't that what we set up the Lompoc Community Foundation for, was for these kind of things? I just am saying, you know, we're going into this with over a million-dollar deficit. We got a budget we're going to start working on this month. I mean, maybe we could find some seed money to put into it. But like you say, all of a sudden, we have a Future for Youth comes in, they want 50. We got 250 with one of our city mural societies, and, you know, a couple hundred with a church. It's, is this really something the council wants to sit here and do every month, is dictate how many thousands we can donate out and make it our responsibility? Or should this be something that we go ahead and delegate down to the community foundation? It's just a question I have.
Anybody want to take that one? And staff?
So, I can, I can speak to the Community Benefit Foundation is established as a nonprofit to be able to receive grant monies or contributions from people in the community, or from, for grant opportunities, and then to disseminate those based upon other city needs and things within the city. It is not intended to help non-city nonprofits. That wasn't, that, that was not part of the vision. So, it's intended to assist police programs, or, or beautification, or parks and rec, or the library, or all, it's, it's meant to help the city programs.
So, the mural society, the city program?
I don't believe the mural society is one of them, because the mural society is.
It's listed here on the staff report as a, oh.
No, that's currently, but not into their group.
So, that would be the Lompoc Benefit Foundation.
The city-sponsored, I'm going to use that term. $25,000 to the city-sponsored. Okay. I mean, you know what I'm saying, is, as a council, policies, procedures, and budgeting, now we're divvying out money for cars and.
I don't disagree at all. I'm just saying that, that the purpose of the two was different.
Okay, so, we won't use that. And I guess that we'll continue on with this conversation.
Okay. Councilmember Bridge?
I just want a little clarification. So, what I'm thinking, I've heard, is that a previous council set aside $75,000, at least on paper, for nonprofits to approach us, and perhaps get awarded a, an award. And we've had two come forward in a year. And we don't have any criteria on how we were going to award this, even if we got 30 of them. We don't, we don't have any criteria today. But we did tell the community if they came forward, we would divvy the money out. And we have two that have. I, seems like we have a prior council that made a commitment. And, well, I guess we can renege on it, but, but that's what the money was set aside for. And we've got two organizations that came in and said, please. So.
Councilmember Ball, then I'll go to Vega.
Sure, thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to put this out in a different light. So, bear with me, because I, my head goes in different directions. When I think about criteria or not, all we asked as a council is, we said, look, we'd love to invest in this community, package something together and approach us. That's all we asked. We didn't tell the groups, if 10 people apply, then we'll listen to everybody, or if two apply, we won't listen at all. We didn't have any of those parameters. So, let's talk about investment and leverage. Let's take the mural society. In one vacuum, we could, and I'm not saying anyone's saying this, but in one vacuum, we could say, gosh, we spent $25,000 on some paint and some walls. What's the benefit of that? Well, in my mind, I think, well, once you spruce up part of your community, it looks a little bit better. Gosh, what do you know? There's people walking around taking pictures. They probably get hungry. Best case scenario, they stay overnight and learn to love Lompoc. So, in that context, I see that as a strategic investment of very little funds that can be leveraged into exponential opportunities for the community. So, I'm not even going to touch the church one, because that's, that's, that's nothing. But on the future one, I, obviously, we can hear from the group, but this is a strategic decision by council. Doesn't mean everything fits, or that we know whether it's a good thing or not. But is it an opportunity for us to invest? And I know 50 grand's a lot of money, but does that leverage, does that investment get us to a return that's worth it? And again, maybe that's a moving target. But when I see and I learn about young people who are, most of their lives never even getting the opportunity to leave this community, and there's a group that's trying to put together a future, literally, and create opportunities for young people to stay out of trouble and to experience a brighter future, and to have that potential, to me, I don't, I don't just blow that off. I don't think that's just another packaged, random nonprofit thing. I think that's a strategic opportunity. That said, I don't think that it's, they should just be given money without accountability. I think that's totally fair. But this council many, many times has made strategic investments with no criteria, other than trying to do what's right by the community. So, that's what I have to say.
Did you have any questions for staff? Any, Councilmember Vega, questions for staff?
You know, Kristi, if you wouldn't mind, I'm listening to you, because we're doing a budget discussion tonight, and I get it. But the idea was, has our financial position changed? And I think you said yes, okay? That's what I'm concerned about. We're going through all kinds of budget meetings right now, and I'd love to help. I just want to make sure from you. We put our trust in you to give us a straight scoop as far as numbers, reserve policies, deficits. And we've had a lot of fee studies, and we've had a lot of utility increases right now that people are hurting right now over those increases. And I'm asking, has the situation changed? Because I think before, there was a recommendation that we had extra money. And I think you're saying, even though it was earmarked, we're not in the same situation, are we?
So, the short answer is, no, we are not in the same situation. The, the longer answer is that we are not. The longer answer is that we are not, we did set the money aside. So what I, what I would want to propose as far as an option, and this is in the conclusion, one of the, we're looking at wanting to be able to help and fulfill the intent of this, but also looking at the fact that our general fund reserve is no longer above the threshold, the policy limit. There is a possibility we could look outside the box and look at donating a van from the city, a used van that we have in our fleet, as an option to giving the 50,000. And that would potentially address the intent of helping the organization without using, and then releasing that $50,000 or $75,000 back to the unassigned fund balance. That would be an option, just for consideration.
Now, another question here, that's a great, thank you for bringing that up. There is a possibility of giving some help for the youth in a different manner if we choose to. Does Human Services Commission also divvy out money to nonprofits for the same purpose? You know, I know they have a limitation of 25,000, but was that not another option also that we could go through with CDBG funds?
So my understanding is that there are very strict guidelines on what needs to be done in order to be able to achieve, receive the monies from the Human Services grants, that there, that, you know, as far as audits and paperwork that's required. Christie can speak more to the specifics of that. But I think that the intent, if I remember correctly, was that this would open opportunities for organizations that didn't meet those qualifications at the Human Services.
That was a pretty long answer to say no, right? Is that what you're telling me?
Sorry, I'm getting tired.
Okay, so you're giving me the long answer that it's a long ride to get to the Human Services Commission?
I ramble when I'm tired, I apologize.
And so, and I'm joking with you, okay? But listen, that is an option for more funding for them, but maybe not at this time. Is that correct? If they needed some cash along with, say, if they even agreed to...
It would be something they could...
A city having an extra used van or something to accomplish this. I don't even know if that would work for them, because that's a great offer, because it does accomplish a couple of things, and it does add to the general, if they're on board, okay? Because I don't know. I'd love to help in a way that doesn't be a detriment. You said our reserve policy is at 14%, and it should be at 16%, correct? Is that what we're looking at? So basically, with a deficit, it changes everything. I know when this original ask was done with council, it was never solidified. It never came back for final direction, because I think one of the questions were, it didn't specify which nonprofits and everything. It was still an open-ended question, even though the intent was from the heart to help. So basically, I think the question would be to the applicants or the people that are asking the nonprofit, if they'd be okay with a donation of a vehicle that the city might be able to provide. And I can't answer that, they could only answer that. So anyway, I wanted the council to address that. If we could address that, so we can figure out which way to go, that'd be great.
So let me, let me get Councilmember Ball on another question, and then we have a public comment, we come back for deliberations. Would that be okay? Okay, Councilmember Ball?
So I appreciate the openness of council to try to help. Just throwing this out there. I'd be open to the city donating a van that it no longer wants to use if it includes full service for every time that it breaks down. The only reason I'm saying that is we're not helping a group if their van that's used, because we don't use it anymore, it's parked on a parking lot, and it doesn't work. And we've wasted money and effort and time. So again, you hear me, they need transport. The best option initially was that new van that comes with a warranty and service and all those things. The whole point, their intent is to make sure kids have access to leave this community and go look for higher education opportunities. You hear where I'm coming from. If we want to donate a van, can we service the van? Can we provide some of those things? That would be helpful.
Let me go to public comment before we come back and deliberate, and then we have a few more questions. All right, let me get public comment. How many people want to come for public comment? All right. If you guys, can you be, I mean, I'll give you the full three minutes if you want, but if you're gonna be a lot of the repeating the same, kudos. But come on, come on up, let's do this. You have three, you can take all three if you want, I'm not gonna cut you out, but I think we know what you want to say.
So we all have three minutes together?
Each, each, each. Oh, I wouldn't do that.
I figured it was worth three minutes. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Chuck Mattson here tonight is a proud executive director of Future for Lompoc Youth. As many of us know us fly, in February of last year, I stood before you when I learned of these available funds and requested $50,000 from the city to help Future purchase a locally sourced van. This van would allow us to better support the Lompoc youth we serve by providing critical transportation to our programs and opportunities. I am grateful that this request is back on the agenda tonight. It means a great deal to us, and more importantly, to the youth, to the young people we work with. The mission of Future is simple, to ensure that every youth we engage with has a solid, actionable plan for success after graduation, so they don't end up in our streets or our riverbed. We don't want them to struggle, we want them to strive, to thrive. And we do that by offering hands-on, real-world opportunities that build skills, confidence, and direction. Through our academies on Lompoc Unified School campuses, students participate in 12-week intensive training programs. Through our mentoring program, they are connected with local leaders who guide and support them. We take them on-site to colleges, universities, Vandenberg Space Force Base, the federal prison, and major employers like the city of Lompoc, Tri-County Building and Trades, so they can see opportunities available to them right here at home. Our job shadowing internship program partnered with the Santa Barbara County gives them firsthand experience in professional settings. We encourage civic engagement involving them in local government, community service projects, so they understand the power of giving back. Lompoc's youths deserve the same opportunities for success as those in neighboring communities. Future works hard to provide that, and results speak for themselves. As we enter our fourth year, we have already graduated around 250 students, young men and women now attending college, working in our community, and building solid futures, including universities all over the country. The funding request before you tonight is more than just a number. It's an investment in Lompoc's youth. It's an opportunity to expand our reach, remove barriers, and help more students achieve success. Your support would be, make a meaningful and lasting impact. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Charlemagne Segovia. I am a volunteer for C4 of Lompoc and Self-Hailing Communities. This is my husband. He is Ray, Raymond Segovia. He is the project manager for Self-Hailing Communities, also works for C4 of Lompoc. My comments are just to let, you know, everybody in the room know that I have three students in LU Lompoc School District. I have a freshman who is the only freshman in Future program. He is promised four long years with Future. I have an eighth grader who is gonna be going to Future, to Lompoc High next year, who also is promised four years with Future. I also have a fourth grader who is at Miguelito, who when it comes her time, she's also gonna have four years with Future. I believe the longevity of this van will make it to my fourth grader. That is the goal. I know that, you know, Chuck has and Davika have for Future. I didn't know I could come to anything like this, it is very late. I know we are all very tired and want to get home, but I think this would be a huge, huge, you know, a great source for our children to be able to travel. My son, being with Future, has gone on several, several field trips to places that I will not be able to take him to. He has gone to UCLA, he has gone to Santa Barbara City College. I know that he has gone to both campuses and Allen Hancock College. I don't go to either one of these places for anything unless I absolutely need to. But my son has had the opportunity to be there, and I feel like this would help, help that tremendously. My husband.
Yeah, thank you. I'm Ray Segovia, I'm with Collective Cultural Security Change, and a parent and a Lompoc resident here. And my concern here is that when I hear these conversations, I really invest in our community. I'm really trying to mitigate the comeback violence and stuff like that, and Chuck is a partner. We collaborate together. And I really think that showing our kids that we really invest in them, they're our future. And so I really, it's not just their name, but that's really a thing for me. My children are my legacy, my future. And so I really support this organization. I really support, you know, this city, and I really love this community, and I want to see it grow better and stronger together. And I don't want to see us give, you know, our second best. We all deserve our first best, and to give our kids the best that they deserve, and an organization that wants to do the work. So that's all I have to say for today. But yeah, thank you for your time, thank you, Mayor, and council members.
It was a pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Mary Mavis McCain-Durrett. I did not think I'd be up here tonight. I didn't even know I was coming. But listening to this, Future has done, I see them in our community everywhere. I work at the school district, but I'm a parent, and I see them do volunteer work and involved in getting these kids involved in everything. I mean, just teaching them how to be adults, how to, like, what life is, to maybe sit on the council one day. They're very involved, and I agree with Councilmember Ball, like, we're gonna give them a broken-down van? This would give them the ability to do so much more with the kids in our community, and for them to take them and see, I mean, I just, I think it would be sad to not give the money that's already been set aside and promised. And then if we're at a point where we can't do that anymore, then that needs to be reevaluated and not do, not offer that at a, next year, at a different time. Take that away then, not now. Because people, like, I don't know, I'm nervous, sorry. How do we take money away that we've already offered and said is there, and they applied for it? And now we have applicants, and then we're gonna go, oh, now we don't have the money? We don't offer money if you don't have it. Thank you, sorry.
Hello, everybody. I'm Celeste Pico, I am the principal at Lompoc High School. I sat here four hours tonight, I'm not, I'm not, I'm gonna speak. So I appreciate being a part of this, I sit through many school board meetings, so, kind of feels like the natural thing, and they've gone very long too. But I want to speak to Futures for Lompoc Youth. I have been a part, a partner in this and a supporter of this since its inception. I have seen what Futures for Lompoc Youth has offered our youth firsthand. I have been at Lompoc High School 11 years, and I have seen the hundreds of students that Chuck's talking about, and the trajectory that they've had, and the resources that they need. And we need to continue providing these and do what we can as a community to continue building our youth. I work with these kids and these families every single day. We all need to do our part to support them. So just thank you for listening, and thank you for all that you guys do for Lompoc.
It's impressive. I did notice. Good evening, Mayor Mosby and members of the Lompoc City Council. I'm Ann McCarty, Executive Director for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, and I'm honored to stand before you tonight in supporting, in the support of funding for Future for Lompoc Youth. Like you, I've had the privilege of witnessing the incredible efforts of Future's leaders, Chuck, Davika, Tim, Celeste, and many others, who've stepped up to empower the young people of our city. I've seen firsthand the dedication of these youth. I've sat in on their mock interviews, a really cool experience, by the way, witnessed their pride as they graduate from Future-led courses, and been absolutely blown away by their tenacity and determination. We all bore witness to the power of their voices as they work to educate our city on the urgent need to improve our schools. Their courage, their growth, and their willingness to step outside of their comfort zones to share an important message was more than inspiring. When I think about the future of this community, a community in which I live and work and have done so for over 30 years, these young people are at the heart of it. To learn, they need the opportunities to go beyond our city limits. To grow, they need experiences that broaden their horizons, equip them with new skills, and build their confidence. That's why I stand before you tonight, and like Celeste and everybody else in here, sat in this four-hour meeting, urging you to invest in their future by supporting Future for Lompoc Youth's request for the $50,000 in funding. This is not just an expense, it is an investment in the leaders of tomorrow, and I have no doubt that this investment will yield tremendous returns for our city. Thank you.
Come on. What's it, anybody else? All right. Anybody on the phone? No? All right. Let's bring it back for council for deliberations. You know, off the bat, I think it was important, as it was said up here, that, you know, the council made a promise in the past. Things have changed, I get it. But a promise was made. And I think that it's important that, granted, two of us weren't there, but you kind of gotta do what was offered. And to pull the carpet off from under somebody, I think that's a cheap shot. And I get it, we're gonna, you guys are gonna help us make some more extra money to fill all these backfills, right? Just a simple, kid, those kids have been before it. So, and I'll go with, let's go first, Councilmember Ball or Councilmember Bridge?
I'll go, I'll make a motion. I have a lot of respect for FLY, and, but I also have a lot of respect for the past council. They made a commitment, and I'll honor that commitment. So I make a motion. We award the $50,000, and we give the $549, I think it is, to the church. Whatever that number is, I'm sorry.
$575.
$575 to the church. That'd be my motion.
I would second that, if I can add on that, we also, the funds that are remaining in there, that we close out this funding program and they go back to the general fund?
I'll accept that amendment.
You support that? Okay, I'll give you a second on that.
And Mayor? We will need to bring back a grant agreement for the $50,000, just to make sure that the strings are attached and the money is used how it's supposed to be used when we grant it, so that will come back.
Please modify my motion to include that.
Oh, yes, and that'll come back on a consent calendar.
You guys good with that out there?
No, and make sure there's no maintenance.
Sure?
No maintenance.
I'll get a second on that. Did you have...
Yeah, just a quick comment, and again, I appreciate, if you allow me, real quickly. I appreciate council's openness and flexibility on this. And it's not, I don't mean to argue or push back, but again, I think this is a strategic investment. And I do have a question for Christie Donnelly, and I'm gonna just hear me out on this. Over the last six years, our reserves, you know our policy, what's the lowest our reserves have gotten in the last six years? Zero?
We were negative.
200 grand, right? Close-ish?
10,000, I believe.
So now our, you know, we still got a ways to go, we're at 14%, you want 16, I get it. But where are we at in our reserve policy right now?
So...
What's our fund? I mean, are we still negative 200 grand, or we have...
No, we presented that earlier to... No, we, well, we presented that earlier today, so we are at...
7.8.
14%.
But the number, meaning in reserves, right now we have about 7.8 million dollars. And at one time in the last six years, we had zero reserves. We had a deficit. So I just want to push back when anyone, including me, in the future, if I say, no, we can't do this because we can't afford it, be cautious. Because if council has allowed us to deplete our reserves out of sometimes necessity, but then we say, ooh, we got 8 million bucks in the bank, but we can't afford 50 grand because, you know, we're, then let's remember to keep the big picture. So I appreciate staff's recommendations on all of these things, but we are way healthier in reserves than we were six years ago. So again, I appreciate council's openness to helping this group out.
You go with Councilmember Starbuck and then back to Councilmember Vega and then call for the vote.
Yeah, I was, I'm just gonna throw out a couple of comments here. You know, one of the reasons that we are a little bit healthier now is because of the ARP or the federal government bailouts. We didn't do this on our own, I can assure you of this. One of the, you know, this is something to me that I take near and dear and I'm very personal about it because this isn't our money. It isn't your money. It's everybody's money. And if you're gonna do the basic math on this, it's the taxpayers' money. And with a population of 43,000, that means everybody's contributing over a dollar to your van that lives in this alley. So you take that into consideration. So there's five people speaking for 43,000 that think you guys deserve a $50,000 van. So you owe everybody a nice thank you note for the dollar and a quarter they gave you, okay? I often kind of wonder about things like this. I wonder if we could have, uh, cut a deal with the school. 25-25, right? But, just saying. It would have been a good little feature. That didn't come. I was gonna say, look into it during the budget, but I guess this is gonna go through and go ahead and go past. I didn't hear anything about the Mural Society. They were the ones that originated this whole thing and this motion. Did, was that part of your motion there, Mr. Bridge?
Is that already done?
Mural Society is already done.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't catch all that, so that was the clarification.
Okay, Councilmember Vega.
You're kidding.
Anything to say?
I'm sorry. Hey, guys, you know, it's always a hard one when it comes to kids, you know? We want to invest. But then again, we had the principal here at Long Po High, and I'd love to hear what the cooperation might be, would have been. Not to deny anything, with the school district, if they're helping, she's actually an advocate for them and that's wonderful. But I was wondering if they were able to partner and they have been assisting in how you guys were getting to anywhere. Because it, it's, it's nice for all of us to work together, not just one. As you know, with nonprofits, uh, we, there's a lot of asks out there and then you're asking us in the middle of a budget session, you know, which is not your fault because it was done before. Uh, and we're over here digging for money and we're trying to figure out. So it's kind of hypocritical in a way because here you're, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point at you, Jeremy. I get it. Uh, you're a good salesperson. But fiscally, you know, we really need to stop catering to everybody that comes and asks. This is a great group, but I'm saying we're gonna have more people coming over here and I don't think the same, same sales pitch is gonna work every time while we're raising rates and everything's going up and people's insurance in town is going up. We have to be cognizant and be fiscally responsible, but we're not doing any good. We're just handing out candy. You know, so I'm just gonna ask you guys, do your math, man. You know, there's people here that are, uh, actually hurting. As you know with COVID, as you guys know, you know, and everybody with education. Hey, guess what? Education is key, you know? Uh, I had to do it the hard way and I, I hope these kids appreciate the help that they have with the mentors they have. So I just wanted to make that point. Okay, guys, you know? Learn and do something with yourself.
All right, Dad, let's go ahead and vote. Oh, and it failed. Just kidding. Five-zero. Thank you, guys, but you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. We're not done yet. Off and running already.
There's only two more hours to go.
I would like to say that, uh, we have, I believe, two slots open on the youth commission. And you're, one of your students could certainly fill one of those slots.
All right, well, down to six more items. Number eight.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt real quick? Chief Martin, sorry. I have a safety announcement that I'd like to make to the council, staff and community. We just got noticed a little while ago that Caltrans shut down Highway 1 to Santa Barbara. The Halauma Road Bridge is, uh, out at the moment. They have a sinkhole, so it's gonna affect most of the community in the morning when they're heading. So if, if there's anybody listening, paying attention, you're gonna have to go into Beulah and hit the 101 and go south, so.
Could I make a rec?
Caltrans put a notice at the...
Take that helicopter we just got, right?
Well, Caltrans put a notice...
She'd have it right down there.
Yeah, Caltrans has put a hard block on one, so.
Could I make a rec? Is this something that the city could post about since they has quite a few followers, social media-wise? Can this is something we can get out?
We'll put it out on our app.
Yeah, you got it. Chrissy's doing it right now. It's already out there. I already got, somebody already, it's already been blasted out. I already got it a little while ago. All right. We good? All right, we're cruising on down.
Ready?
Yeah. Why not?
Mayor and council, uh, this is a code cleanup item. We have three chapters in our municipal code, chapter 5.20, 5.24 and 5.28, that, uh, I have talked with city clerk's office and the police department and we have all concluded that these three chapters are outdated, unnecessary, and they have not been enforced maybe in decades. Um, and so we are presenting these for the city council to consider deleting. In fact, chapter 5.20 requires anyone who desires to operate a public dance or dance hall or cabaret to first obtain a permit from the police department. Chapter 5.24 requires anyone who desires to operate a dancing academy or studio, a dance studio, or other place where dancing lessons are offered to the public to obtain a police department permit. Chapter 5.28 requires anyone who wants to operate a skating rink to obtain a police department permit. These were all adopted more than 50 years ago. Uh, staff currently does not enforce these provisions and we believe they're no longer necessary. The concern raised by, the one concern raised by staff is that, uh, the requirement for a permit for cabarets may be appropriate or necessary because some cabarets could be operated as adult-oriented cabarets. We have a separate chapter in the municipal code which has more updated, uh, regulations for adult businesses. And that chapter applies over the chapter 5.20 that regulates cabarets, which is much older. This item did come to the city council in February of 2022 and the council at that time directed staff to return with an ordinance that would leave in place any provisions that are useful for the protection of youth. Uh, after considering that council direction, I personally, uh, found that the existing chapter 5.40 that regulates adult businesses is protective of youth and that there are First Amendment issues with leaving the regulation on dance halls in place. Because the standards for the permit issuance and just the fact that there is a prior restraint government, um, permit requirement just to hold a dance is a First Amendment issue because that is a form of expression. So, uh, staff is remending, recommending that these three chapters simply be repealed as a code cleanup and I am available for questions.
Any questions?
Do we have to have public, uh...
Yes.
Yeah, right now.
There's no questions, we'll go to public comment. They're lining up. Nobody out there?
Nobody's here.
Okay, we'll close public comment. Coming back to council to deliberate, you guys have any questions?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
I just thought maybe Councilmember Ball, that's what a skating rink was or something.
I'm just happy I can dance again. This is great.
All right, make your motion.
I'm gonna make a motion, we accept staff recommendation.
There's one out there. Who wants a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's a Bridge and Ball. You weren't...
Oh, man, Brett.
Bridge with a motion, Ball with a second. Go ahead and vote. Look at that, expeditiously. You guys done good. I think somebody's got their finger on it already. All right, number nine. Council discussion requirements for staff to return council requests.
Well, this was mine. I, uh, was the one who initiated this and, um, I've had quite a, uh, extensive conversation with staff. I've had quite an extensive conversation with staff. I don't know what the protocol is, but I'd be willing to pull this council request back if, I don't know if anybody still wants to discuss it or not.
I'll discuss it.
Councilmember Vega.
Okay, I think we, we kind of, all kind of understand that we just like a few of the council requests. Uh, a little more communication would help and I think the staff is, uh, agreeable to working together. I think all of us work well together, so I'm looking forward to, uh, staff maybe presenting some new ideas on how we can expedite some of the more important issues or items that we may have requested for council. And I think, uh, without going on and on, I think we have a good meeting of the minds with staff. So unless somebody else has any other questions, I'd just like to thank staff for being willing to, uh, explore a couple of other ideas so we can make it work together for all, the, the good of all Long Po.
Any other questions, discussion about that? We'll open up for public comment. We got a phone call already. Did somebody order a pizza? We got a public comment? Are we waiting after this? Item number nine? Okay, don't, the two-minute session. All right, with that, we'll close public comment. This is a receive and file type of thing. We did your discussion, we don't know, no motions needed. Correct? Okay, written communications.
Yes, one email was received. It was delivered to council, to staff, placed on the website. It was from Mr. Ron Fink.
Okay. Oral communications, this is your last two minutes. Fire away, we got one on the phone. Don't hang up on him this time, Chrissy. Hello? Hello?
Go ahead and begin speaking.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Can you repair a street in Long Po? College Avenue between 7th and A Street. It's a terrible road you ride on. It hasn't been repaired in months. Can you hear my question?
Yes, sir, we heard you. Thank you. It's public comment, so they do not respond to your question.
We have another one? Hold that for $300,000, huh? Was that "Time is Up"? Is that what that new sound is? The new Gong Show? Something's not working over there. Who needs fireworks when you have this much fun, right? Are we figuring it out? Are you done?
We're done. I'm done. I apologize.
It's like laughing here.
I'm trying, Paul, I'm sorry.
All right, with that...
He doesn't like College Avenue. You're here to Long Po City Council meeting, did you want to provide public comment? You don't want to tell me what your public comment is? We're having a little trouble with our auditory system.
We good? We're still working on it. I know College, I think maybe, maybe it was between 7th and 3rd Street where the line was dug up, but you guys are working on fixing it. So it's in the works to get fixed, right, Mr. Luther? Yes. Mario, you got to learn how to use that phone. Are you getting a statement? No? Get tech support.
Well, I'm in charge of parks and recreation, so if you want me to take care of it, I can.
Are you good? Is it public comment or you got it?
The guy says, get rid of Mario.
All right.
Okay. Do you want to make the comment? Hi, I'm Chrissy, I am...
TikTok.
Chrissy Donnelly, I'm in charge of finance. I'm Chrissy Alex, I'm the community development director. Uh, this opportunity is just to provide public comment.
Okay. Can I close public comment, city attorney? Can we close or? You gotta wait still? Is it happening?
No, I think it's appropriate to close public comment.
Okay. With that, we'll close public comment. So we're done with that? Let's go to council comments and meeting reports. What? Are we good? We, we can go to...
Because of technical difficulties, we had to close public comment.
Because of technical difficulties on the phones, we had to close it. Okay, Councilmember Ball. Council comment, meeting reports?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Vega?
Nothing. No report.
Councilmember Bridge, we're cruising too fast. Yes, I did. Uh, I got appointed on, I went to SB CAG, APCD. I got appointed as alternate on Delafco and I had a number of other meetings with city staff and stuff, none at city expense. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting until February 18th at 6:30 PM. We're out of here.